Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners' May 2 meeting. At this time, I'd like to call for Reverend Cindy Simpson for an invocation. Reverend Simpson, thank you so much for being here this morning.
Let us pray. O God of all we call holy, bless all who hold leadership in Dare County and who bring dreams, business, concerns to this body. Grant all here a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, so that whatever unfolds in this good place serves the well-being of all people. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Simpson. May we stand for the pledge?
The pledge is to declare the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Couch is not able to be with us here this morning. He has an excused absence, so keep him in your thoughts. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to the county manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
All right. Thank you, county manager. I just have two brief items just to review this morning. Icon in the community who passed away in November. All of you know, Mr. Eddie Green passed away in November of last year. His family is inviting the public to a celebration of life, which, once again, I said Eddie passed away in November. And that event will take place on Saturday, May 14, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 108 Budley Street in Manio. So the public is invited. So if you have an opportunity, please attend and express your condolences to the family.
Bob, what were those hours again?
11:00 Jim a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the only other item I have is the Jug Handle Bridge, which you know, several weeks ago, we did the ribbon cutting. Unfortunately, the bridge is not going to open the first of May as they had hoped. It looks like it'll be sometime mid-May. And the reason for that is due to damage to one of the bridge's expansion joints that they have to repair on the northern end of that. So hopefully, they'll get that done soon, and we will hopefully see traffic flowing sometime mid-May. So keep that date open. We hope they'll meet those deadlines. With that being said, county manager, that completes the chairman's comments.
Chairman, next on the agenda is the presentation of the service pins. This morning, I think we have about 95 years worth of service that we'll recognize. First on our list is Carolyn Holladia. She's a leisure activities specialist with our Parks and Rec Department, and she's receiving her 20-year pin from Tim White. All right, well, we'll move down to the next one, and you tell me when she gets here, Tim. Next is Sean Barrera. He's a deputy sheriff or lieutenant with the Sheriff's Department, and he's receiving his 20-year pin from Sheriff Doug Downey.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chairman.
Gentlemen, you too, man. Mr. Allen made fun of me. He said, "I'm sure I have my speech prepared." He knows I don't write anything down like that. So he wondered where I'm going, and so is Sean, because I mess them up at the Christmas party every now and then. But I was trying to think back. Sean came in 2002, and I was thinking, I think that's just about the same time as the new courthouse was built over there. So he was kind of coming in when they were moving in. So it kind of started with there. We have moved around, and the next gentleman coming up will be about five years longer than he has. So Sean got at least a home, one home, that he didn't have to worry about where he was going and to figure out what was going on. But Sean, I was investigated when Sean came in, and Sean kept us very, very busy. When radio traffic came on, we got ready to go, because Sean was going to be somewhere that he was going to need one of us. And he stayed like that for about two years, and then things slowed down with him. Sean's done a great job for us. He's worked really hard. He's been promoted through the ranks. He was a sergeant, stayed there for a little while, and now he's our lieutenant. And Sean's getting ready to make a big step. We're losing Alan Moran, and Sean's going to step into being our jail administrator. That's going to be a very, very big task. And he's been there two or three or four days and kind of getting the feel of what's going on, and so far, enjoying that. And it'll be a big switch, and he has some big shoes to fill. But Sean does a good job of what he's done. He's done a lot of reading already. He's impressed me. People over there like him. He's easy to get along with. He's got a great personality. So he's going to be really, really good for the job. Very appreciative that he took that initiative to do that. So we've got 20 in you, big man. We've got a while left. I hope you stay around for at least to finish up at 30, and thank you for everything you do. You're a blessing to us, and you're a good friend also. It means a lot. And there goes your pin.
Next, we have Lieutenant Andrew Creach. He's here today to receive his 25-year pin from Sheriff Doug Downey.
Andy Creach is with us. Andy's been around 25. So as I was saying, he started out when we were still working Duck, and Collington had a Duck office, which was really nice, because back then, it was at least quiet enough where you could go up there and enjoy. There weren't so much traffic as it is today. A very different world, and we kind of slid back and forth from Collington to Duck. So it was busy. You can imagine being in Duck, getting to Colling- Collington, and having to make that track and get there as quick as you can. So Andy, same way as Sean has worked his way through the ranks, Andy got to be a sergeant and then decided that he might, I guess, his forte is working drugs. He really likes doing that, but he also likes being on the street. So he made a short stint with our Drug Investigation Unit, did a great job while he was there, but I think he liked stopping cars and meeting people and still answering calls. So he decided to roll back in, and then a little while after that, we promoted him to lieutenant. So Andy still likes the road. He reminds me of Doc Hager with the SBI. He'd rather be working than doing paperwork. He likes to be out there and getting in the middle of what's going on. And he does a great job of that. He's also a great supervisor. His whole family kind of works with us at the sheriff's office. His daughter is over at Communications, and I don't know how she does that, listening to him on the radio. I know that's a tough job. And then his wife is part-time with us at the sheriff's office, works our front desk. And his son is in college, and I'd be remiss if I don't say that, and I'm not going to say he got it from Andy, but I think his son has been the number-one student at North Carolina State. I know he was the number-one freshman for both semesters. I think he was the number-one sophomore, got a heck of a brain and a bright future. And it's just neat, and no doubt that Andy is a family man, loves his family, and it's good to watch him and watch his Facebook posts of how proud he is of what his family has done. He's a very, very good friend to me. One thing Andy will do, he'll tell you what he thinks. He doesn't sugarcoat anything. So at least I know whether I'm going in the right direction or the wrong direction, and we don't stay in trouble that way. And I appreciate it very much. You've got a little time left, five more, and I hope I'm here to finish out with you. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Rob Crawford. He's an environmental health specialist, and he will be receiving his 30-year pin from Josh Coltrane.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. It's county manager.
I'm as good as the sheriff at working on the floss. I actually had to type out some of my notes. I was preparing this. I was trying to put 30 years of service into perspective. Rob began his career in May of 1992. At that time, I was seven years old. Robert Preston, environmental health specialist, here with us. He was 10 years old. It's been a while. A lot of folks don't know that prior to working in environmental health, Rob worked in the oil and gas industry and even spent time working over in Kuwait. But in May of 92, he was hired by environmental health supervisor, Mr. Fred Parker, to become the first specialist working in large wastewater systems. He quickly became an expert, and he was the only intern to serve on the committee, which created centralized intern training, which all environmental health specialists must now complete. He created our program for all type IV, V, and VI inspections for special-engineer-type systems processing thousands of gallons of wastewater, and developed the corresponding inspection reports and operations permits, many of which we still use to this day. Over the years, Rob has worked with numerous engineers, developers, and contractors, and has established an excellent rapport with them. He's considered a leading expert in North Carolina on large wastewater systems, and has been asked to lecture at many onsite wastewater conferences, and even to lecture at a conference in Rhode Island on our North Carolina Wastewater System Program. He was very gracious in sharing his knowledge with me when I was first hired, and I feel privileged to have worked with him and consider him a dear friend. At the end of the month, Rob has decided to bring his career to a close and retire with his 30 years of service. He intends to spend more time fishing, and maybe with the more time doing it, he'll become as good at catching trout as me. But Rob, congratulations. On behalf of the EH unit in Dare County, thank you for your service.
Okay, we'll move on to the employee of the month, and Jenny Collins is here for that presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning, lady.
I'd like to introduce paramedic Avery Whitfield. Avery came to the department in December of 2018, and she has been a steady go-getter the entire time that she's been here. One of her true passions is to help with training. And it's training, whether it's the incumbent folks in our continuing education platform or folks that may be going for their paramedic, she'll sit there and she'll work with them or even to the newest employee. And she has this gift to make them feel very, very comfortable and make sure that they are feeling empowered with their knowledge and everything. She also helped us recently with externship, which were some medical doctors that were coming out and looking at being board-certified in emergency medicine, and they visited us. And I had Avery there on the helicopter. She is assigned to MedFlight, and she talked to them about some of the unique challenges in the coastal environment and the unique challenges of providing EMS on a barrier island. So she did a great job. And she has a heart of gold. We had a new employee who was going through orientation, and orientation is done before they go on to shift work. So it's on Monday through Friday for about a week or two weeks, depending on their certification level, and sometimes even longer for paramedics. And this person was trying to find housing. As we all know, it's very difficult. And Avery recognized that this was especially an issue at this person with their commute every day. So she opened up an apartment in her home and offered this to this new employee, which was a godsend until their rental became available and everything. So Avery, for everything that you do, and hopefully, she's having a future paramedic for Dare EMS. I'd like to present to you employee of the month, and thank you very much for your dedicated service.
Chairman, want to wait just a second for her to come in?
Yeah.
She's in the parking lot. Chairman, want to wait just a second for her to come in?
Sure.
You know, it means a lot to have somebody believing you. And, you know, I go to them and I say, this is what I want to do. And they say, well, Mr. Tim says, if it makes sense, then do it or whatever. But just to have people that believe in you, to have the parent support, to have community support, to have your support, I just want to say thank you very much because I can truly say that I have a job that I love to come to and to do each and every day. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go to public comment, those of you that received an award this morning, if you would go right out through this door to have your picture made, please.
I just wish Washington could come down here, Washington DC, and just spend a couple hours watching them.
Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time it's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand and I'll recognize you when I do. Please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light up on the podium that will come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left. And when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On the sign up sheet, I have, it's Molly, and I apologize, I can't read your last name, Molly. Garavito, come on up, Molly, please.
Actually, Jamie Varnell.
You can swap, yeah, you come first if you like.
Thank you.
Because you're second on the list.
Good morning. My name is Jamie Varnell. Molly Garavito is also here. We are responsible for the packages in front of you. The Green Space Initiative is what I believe we called it. And we just want to talk to you about what we feel is a really amazing opportunity to invest in our local youth while simultaneously addressing two of the top three areas of priority that were identified by the 2019 Dare County Community Needs Assessment Report. That would be mental health and substance abuse. As you know, this assessment is done every three years. There should be a report coming out in 2022, but to the best of my knowledge, that has not been released at this point. But I would assume that everyone is aware that these are still real issues in our community. Mental health and substance abuse are big issues here. Countless studies have shown the significance and positive impact that exercise and sports have on mental health and reducing substance abuse in the future, especially in young children. From academic to physical and emotional health, the benefits to children playing sports are just countless. Working hard and achieving goals builds self-confidence. Team sports help players create new relationships. Trust others, become confident and reliable community members. Sport participation has also been linked to positive development and a decrease in risky behavior in youth. They're less likely to go out and do the dangerous things, the drug-taking, the vandalism, the things that are problems in our community. So we really have this opportunity to reach these kids at a young age, to instill discipline and focus, and encourage respect and team building, have positive mentors in your life, from coaches and directors, family support for all of the same. We have amazing programs on our beach. OBX Storm, OBX Lacrosse, Dare County Parks and Rec have countless sports options available to our kids. Our biggest problem right now that's facing all of these organizations is the lack of consistent field space. Dare County Parks and Rec was created over 40 years ago, and it really, we've expanded so much in growth and population, especially in those that want to be involved in youth sports. And the establishments, the fields, they haven't really been updated significantly or expanded to match that growth in a number of years. We also face the issue of limited space, obviously where we are on the beach. We don't have a lot of space to work with. So Satterfield Landing is one of, well, it's the only lighted field space on our beach. And unfortunately, due to environmental issues this year, it's been closed for months. So this has left our lacrosse teams, our soccer teams without home field space. We haven't been able to really practice consistently. It's left everybody kind of scrambling to save our seasons. So without this consistent access to reliable field space, we're not able to really grow these programs and reach all the youth that we need to reach on this beach. So what can we do? Well, like we said, work with the space that we have. Satterfield Landing is already, it already has lights, it's already a great space. There's at least four fields out there now. It can be expanded to as many as six or eight. So after researching this issue at length, Molly and I and the community members that we've spoken with believe the most efficient and consistent and effective solution is to turf the fields at Satterfield Landing. The information we provided in your packets and that Molly's going to talk about a little bit, we've, it's been compiled and reviewed by a large number of stakeholders, including coaches, directors of both lacrosse and soccer, parents, teachers, different members of boards of different towns and county. And really, there's strong support and excitement for this project and the potential it has to positively impact this entire community. So I really hope if you have questions, you know, you'll reach out after Molly's presentation. Thank you.
Welcome, Molly.
Thank you very much, Chairman. My name again is Molly Garavito, and thank you again for having us here today. So based on what Jamie had just mentioned, we're talking about turfing Satterfield Landing. Again, the packets that you have is 31 pages of solid information, case studies and research that we've done over the past several months. So mainly what we're looking at right now, and again, the Green Space Initiative, our main goal right now is to turf Satterfield Landing. Why are we looking to turf it? Again, it provides a consistent space, it's economically affordable, it's efficient, and again, it expands the offerings to additional sports within the area. It also allows us to recruit some additional quality coaches and other things here for the youth of Dare County. So the goals of our initiative are to provide access to safe, high-quality field space. We would also like to tie this into the opportunity to increase tourism, and we were able to do that within the presentation as well. Eliminate obstacles and issues that arise from grass. We do like the grass fields and everything, and I've been coaching and volunteering with youth sports here for years on the beach. I have three active children. And again, we just want to try and help alleviate some of the obstacles that we do face. So our target markets would be families, people in the community, any, of course, visitors. We would also like to provide a safe space for the adult leagues to continue to practice, Outer Banks Storm, Outer Banks Youth Soccer Association, of course, Parks and Rec. OBX Lacrosse is a continually growing program. They're part of the Coastal Crush League. Every single game for OBX Lacrosse, starting in middle school, is in Hampton Roads or beyond, Williamsburg, et cetera. So we are on the road every weekend. There's no home game, nothing. So this would again, provide that opportunity for us to be able to have something like that. So current outside interest in tournaments, to be able to tie this into tournament, over 1,000 individual groups have actually expressed interest in the Outer Banks actually hosting tournaments here on the Outer Banks that have already said that, hey, you have it, we will come. Outer Banks Lacrosse would then also have a home field, and we included a breakdown, which is also included in your slides, for the return on investment on, based on really conservative numbers for a two-day tournament for soccer. And again, this would all be shoulder season specific. So basically, it would create about $7,500 just in tax, going directly back to the county per tournament, based on our rough estimates. So the turf versus grass benefits and cost analysis, again, there is a much more detailed report within the presentation packet that you have. But long story short, the grass is more maintenance, it is more costly over time. Turf does have that initial investment, of course. However, it does create a great return on investment. A lot of people and groups that have already done turf continue to do turf. Greenville's another one. They're actually re-turfing again after their first 10 years because they were so satisfied with it. And again, it allows us to have that consistency in programs and be able to offer that for our kids. Turf myths, that's made with carcinogens. It's actually only made with only non-toxic ingredients, recycled and natural materials such as sand, crushed shells, and cork. It's safe for kids to play, there are no holes, surface issues, it's not slippery in the rain, there are no pesticides, allergens, any potential harmful things that our children can potentially ingest. And again, long story short, it also ends up being more eco-friendly than grass. So in our slides is also outlined the estimated cost over time and what the actual investment would mean regarding maintenance, any field issues, upkeep, et cetera. And mainly what the timeline that we would be looking at. So if this is approved, and this is something that we can go ahead and move forward with and say contract signed tomorrow, it is 10 to 12 weeks to prepare these fields to turf. Once 10 to 12 weeks is up, we're playing. That's it. We're good to go for 10 years. The end. There's no downtime, very minimal maintenance of raking. The cost estimate is also included in there. The company that we have selected and decided to present to you, we had chosen because they do not have issues, they're a United States-based company, and there's no supply chain issues. So the 236,216 square feet that's at Satterfield, total cost to turf, that would be $1,62,972. We're asking for the authorization to turf Satterfield. We are asking for monetary support as a line item to the addition to the 2223 budget. And we are asking this on the behalf of the community stakeholders, local businesses, sports community, families. We are confident in our fundraising ability to also get this done and help support. Thank you again so much for your time today. Please reach out, continue the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here today for public comment? Any other public comment? Any comment from Buxton? Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment and would move on to item five, and item five on the agenda.
It looks like there's somebody there.
I'm sorry, there is somebody from Buxton?
Hey, Susan, you there?
I think they got it fixed. At least they never had it, whatever you call it. I just saw him living in real time, so.
Susan, here.
Yes.
Okay. So go ahead, we see on the video.
Do we have public comment from Buxton?
We do, we have one speaker, Jeff Westcoat.
Welcome this morning, Mr. Westcoat.
Good morning there, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here. I'm just here to talk about the parking problem that we're having in Buxton. Recently, I've been advised that the Orange Blossom, it has special permission to park on the Annex Building's parking lot. And I just feel that if that is extended to the Orange Blossom, it should be extended to all the other businesses around the area. And I think it's a great idea if Dare County is providing employee parking for businesses because we have such an issue down here. I know that with the sports bar next to me, during their shift change, they have to park on my lawn as they're changing employees. I've told a few of them that it'd be okay to park over at the Annex Building with the permission that the Orange Blossom employees have. They don't know if they're allowed to do it, so I just feel like Dare County should advise everybody that they're allowed to park on park service property. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. How many minutes?
I'll address that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, or you want me to do it on my agenda?
Just address it now while Mr.
So a few years ago, the folks at the Orange Blossom, which is right across the street, asked if they could come in and park on our facilities in the early morning hours. And we allowed them to do that. It didn't interfere with what we were doing, and it was a convenience to them. So we said that would be fine. When we have voting or when we have other events in that building, then we tell them that they can't park and they make other arrangements. This is the second person that has come to me recently wanting to open this up for parking. There's another business there that wants to park there as well. The facility isn't really capable of handling public parking on a first-come, first-served and still allow Tim and his teams to do what they do with the facilities on a daily practice for the limited use of the Orange Blossom in the limited hours. It didn't cause problems, and they had a relationship where they would know when we were doing things and move. We can't do that on a large scale. And so I understand the concern that if we're going to do it for one, we're going to do it for all. I was considering just stopping parking there altogether, simply because I don't think we can accommodate allowing it to be a public parking lot for people to come whenever they want to. I mean, again, small scale, two or three or four cars at limited times that are on a schedule, we can deal with that. Multiple businesses, that would now be at least three businesses trying to park there. If his is a bar, then we can't handle that scale. And so with that said, unless you tell me different, I think we don't have many options. Either we're going to allow the Orange Blossom or something that's small to be there exclusively, or we're going to have to close it to all because we can't open it to all. I don't know whether you all have thoughts or ideas differently than that. If you do, share them, please.
Your logic seems reasonable. Everybody wants it now, so it will close for everybody else. So.
Yep.
So that'll be the plan, Tim?
Hold on a minute, County Manager.
Would it make any sense, or is an option, or would an option be to have a limited number of spaces there and just first come, first served, you know, five spaces, 10 spaces, whatever?
The problem for us is whoever's parking there, we have to have a relationship with them because we have to ask them to move their cars, we have to ask them not to be there at certain times, we have to do things on a schedule. And when it's one business and three or four cars, then they don't particularly like doing it, I don't think, but Susan and her team down there, Tim and his team down there, and Denise have been able to work around that. We can't do that if we have multiple businesses at different times and all that, so. Got you. Okay, all right. With that said, we'll move on to item five on the agenda. This is Joe Thompson, the Avon PRL, the Travel Park Sites. It is an SUP application, and Noah Gill and my planning directors here for that. Noah has been signed, has been sworn, and I think, are you here, Joe? Okay. And the applicant has been sworn as well, so. Noah?
Morning, how you all doing?
Good.
In December of 2020, Mr. Thompson came before and y'all and presented his travel trailer sites in conjunction of his commercial property there, Avon Pier. During that time, the, a condition of the special use permit and the travel trailer park ordinance allows the applicant 12 months to install his improvements. But due to COVID-19 material shortages and labor shortages, he was unable to install the improvements before the 12-month time period was up. So by ordinance, when that happens, he's required to resubmit his proposal to the planning board and then, you know, forward it to the Board of Commissioners. Since that time, he's been working on installing the improvements. Nothing on the site has changed since the original proposal. This is just the formality that he has to resubmit. His engineer for the project, Mr. Joe Anloff, is here, he can speak to it and, you know, tell you, you know, where they are with it now. I've been on site, the improvements are almost done, and I think Joe, as he told me this morning, the improvements are almost 100% complete. But this is really just the formality of the ordinance that he had to resubmit. So the 12-month timeframe could be extended, so he was still within the timeframe for submitting his final plat for review.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Joe Anloff with Anloff Engineering. I received a text from Joe Thompson yesterday evening saying that all the improvements are complete and he's ready to open. The as-built survey is in process, and it was the fiberglass pedestals for the individual RV sites for the service connections that was the holdup. They were months and months and months in delay, and he was unable to open last year. So he's ready to go. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yeah. You consent to the entry of the evidence that's in, all the documentation that's in the file as evidence in this matter?
I do.
And you agree to the testimony that's been presented this morning as well?
Yes, sir, I do.
And you agree to the terms and the conditions of the special use permit to be issued?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have. Just so you know, we looked for a different solution to this, know what I did. The way our ordinance is written, if you don't file your notice to extend by a certain time, then it dies, and we couldn't find a way to work around it, so we didn't have to bring them back in. The next one is going to be the same situation.
Right.
So that's why we're here.
Okay. Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin to approve the draft SUP and site plan, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, likes that? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, sir.
And then item six is special use permit number 2-222 for Beachland Farms Travel Park, and planning directors here for that one as well.
Again, same scenario.
Hang on, one last, you've been sworn and.
Mr. Fearan has been sworn as well.
Fearan has been sworn as well, if you'd come up as well.
In July of 2020, Mr. Fearan submitted a proposal for a campground here on Roanoke Island. He even counted the same things, but due to COVID-19 material shortages, labor shortages, the permit expired in that 12-month time period. Again, by formality of the ordinance, he has to resubmit, so that's what we're here doing. There have been no major changes to the site plan. Since the first time it was reviewed, the travel trailer park ordinance has been updated. There is a update to one of the conditions that allows the planning director to give final authorization to allow park, the park operations to commence instead of having to be brought back in front of the planning board. That was the only change on this special use permit. And then to the site with Mr. Fearan, he is almost in the process of being finalized and ready to operate, so.
Okay. And I have the same questions for you, Mr. Fearan. Do you consent to the evidence that's in the file on this matter?
Yes, I do.
And do you agree to the testimony that's been presented this morning?
Yes, I do.
And do you agree to the terms and the conditions contained in the special use permit?
Thank you, County Manager.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor then to approve the draft SUP and site plan as presented by Commissioner House, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likes that? Motion carries unanimous. Mr. Fearan?
Thank you.
So that brings us to item seven on the agenda. Sarah Sampson and others are here to make a presentation on the Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County.
Welcome this morning, Ms. Sampson.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Sampson, and I'm the Executive Director of Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County. We want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We want to highlight some of the programs that we offer and also the impact that we've had on the community the last couple of years. I want to thank you for your continued support because we could not do this without your help. The daily work of Children and Youth Partnership, also known as CYP, is done by our amazing staff, who all work together to ensure the highest quality services are available to children, families, and early childhood educators in Dare County. And I would like to recognize them and thank them and ask them to stand. So with me today is Kaylee Askew, Angela Owens, Kathy Waxman, Jennifer Garrett Bradshaw, Carla Hefford, and Molly McInnes.
Was Dolly busy?
Yeah, you don't.
Yeah. We kept her back at the office.
Couldn't make it today?
No.
I loved it.
We know that children need good health, strong families, and high-quality early childhood experiences. With that, they're more likely to succeed in life, graduate from high school, and grow into healthy, productive citizens and valuable employees. Our mission is to connect children, adolescents, and families with programs and partnerships to ensure that they have what they need to thrive. And today, I just want to highlight a few of our programs.
Yep, please continue, yes.
I want to start with just imagining needing to choose between diapers and putting gas in your car. Being able to provide diapers to your childcare provider so you can go to work. We know that this is a real need for families in our community, and we launched CYP's Diaper Bank in June of 2020. And since the launch, we have distributed an estimated of 134,000 diapers to families in our community. And that equals around 3,900 packages through 35 distribution events. We do these events as contactless pickup events at our office in Manio. We also bring the diaper bank down to Hatteras at the Buxton Tennis Center and up to Kitty Hawk to ensure that we're reaching all families in our community. We recognize that childcare is crucial, is a crucial part of our society, because without it, many parents could not work. Despite the stresses of COVID and working full-time, there are early childhood educators that are working towards their higher educational goals. Just in 2021, we were able to reward 16 early childhood educators with bonuses as a result for their, further in their education and coursework. I also want to take this opportunity to thank you. Thank you for recognizing, appreciating, and supporting the early childhood workforce who make a difference in the lives of young children, leading to high-quality early childhood experiences for Dare County's youngest citizens. Our early childhood professionals have been on the front line throughout the pandemic. One of the providers stated that these grants have been life-changing for her and her program and her family. So thank you. We also offer a continuum of early literacy programs. These programs assist parents in building a habit of daily reading to their young children and instill a love for reading at the young age. Some of the programs that we offer is Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. We have mailed 27,772 books, uh, just since the beginning of a pandemic. Our Reach Out and Read program distributed 4,252 books during well-child visits along with a prescription to reading to their children.
How does that work differing from the 27,000 that were mailed?
Those are two of our early literacy programs. So with Imagination Library, that's available to all children in our community, birth through five. And they get a book mailed into, um, into the home, in a mailbox directly to the children.
So the parents register for that program?
It's a free program that we're offering to all families in Dare County.
And we send books once every few months?
Every month. Every month, the child receives free.
And that's different from the next one, the Reach Out, because the Reach Out includes personal visits or calls at the home?
Yeah, so along with the Reach Out Read, we're promoting, um, reading through our relationships with the medical providers in our community. And it's done during the well-child visits.
Is that a voluntary, I raise my hand, please come by my house and visit me? How do you know which 2,000 people to visit?
So that is when the children go to their well-child visits. So as an infant, they go more frequently, and we distribute books at every well-child visits. While when the children get a little bit older, it's going to be an annual visit to their medical provider during their checkups, when they go in for the immunization.
So the 2,000 books are distributed at the medical provider's office?
Mm-hmm, the 4,000.
4,000, I'm sorry, my screen disappeared here, sorry. Okay, thank you.
We contract with the Department of Public Health for the, for the Babylings program. This is a program that is a home visit by a registered nurse. It's available to all new mothers in our community and their infants shortly after birth. And it's ensuring that the children grow, have a growth, healthy growth and development. I would like to share with you a short story of the impact this program has had on a family. I was able to visit a single mother. She had no family and was staying with a friend. I was able to bring her diapers, clothes, toys, and much-needed information and education. She will have to work and was anxious about leaving her baby. Because Babylings provides a wealth of resources, we are able to discuss safe daycare, WIC, and ensure that the baby is in the process of getting Medicaid. We also discussed the diaper giveaway program and a variety of safety topics for her baby. This patient was an attentive mother who needed resources, education, and reassurance. Babylings was able to provide all three. We also offer Parents as Teachers, which is another home visiting program. This program is available to families prenatal through kindergarten entry. And again, I want to share with you a brief story. Our parent educator is currently working with a grandparent, a grandparent who has full custody of her granddaughters. During at least monthly home visits, information is shared about child development and activities that promote learning and positive behaviors. Our goal is to work towards meeting the individual needs of each family, addressing any goals or areas in need of further support. In this case, we have connected the family to mental health services provided through the county, which now provides another layer of support to the family. The grandparent and children are thriving with these layers of support and is now working towards finding employment and has been connected to DSS Childcare Subsidy Program. Through our services, the grandparent feels empowered and supported in her role and is growing right along with her girls. And these are just two examples of the impact that we are having on so many families in our community. Parents as teachers last year offered 249 home visits and 13 group activities. Our family support program offers workshops to parents and information and referrals to all families in our community. In 2021, we pivoted to doing some virtual sessions due to the pandemic. And we held se- uh, six parenting seminars and an eight-week course. Then this year so far, we've held three parenting seminars and two different eight-week parenting courses. And these are all free or charged to families.
What was the attendance in these workshops and seminars? I'm just trying to get a feel for the context.
Yeah.
Two people?
Attendance has been lower than previously. Um, I don't have exact numbers with me today.
And again, I'm not looking at.
But it has been lower, and we will be looking at, uh, probably offering some small group sessions again. Maybe combination of virtual and in-person. We're doing a survey right now to see what is the preference of families.
I, I was just trying to get a feel. Is it like five people show up?
Five to 10 for each of them. Um, I mean, it's very powerful to see that the families are reporting changes in their homes.
Yeah.
Uh, they're coming back for further sessions. Um, some of these are intense eight-week courses, so they come back week after week.
I mean, I got to believe these workshops would be amazingly valuable. That's why I was curious if a lot of folks were taking advantage of what would probably be outstanding programs.
It is.
Yeah.
Um, Triple P Online is also available free of charge to families, so they can do this on their own, on their, um, on their own pace. But these are workshops that we are hosting with community, uh, press centers, yes.
The attendance was better than after?
Yes.
So.
Yes and no. I mean, it's going to depend. I mean, it is hard to figure out, you know, when parents are available, you know. We offer a lot of things throughout the year, and yes, attendance has, um, decreased some.
So the preference, the preference is in person?
It may be. I mean, right now, we're doing a survey to try and determine that.
That's why I was asking about how it went, you know, before you started doing, uh, virtual.
Yeah, some of our seminars, like a one, uh, single topic, uh, those are usually, uh, better attended versus when a family has to sign up for an eight-week class. But those are more intensive, and we are really making a difference in the lives of those families.
Got you, thank you.
Next, I would like to share with you a short video. This is a soft reveal of our new logo. As we're. Like over here. We are currently going through a rebranding process. We're offering the same amazing programs to our community. We just felt like we needed a new refreshed logo that emphasizes the word partnership. We are working together with lots of community partners to achieve the results that we're working towards and also having a bright, shining, thriving star, uh, connecting to the work that we're doing to help families thrive.
Sarah, just real quickly, the Smart Start Network. I know you guys have explained what that is in the past, and I apologize, I've forgotten.
No, that's okay. Thanks. Great question. Thank you. Um, Smart Star is a, uh, National Early Childhood Recogni- or North Carolina Recognized Early Childhood Initiative, and we, uh, offer the Smart Start programs in our community. And Smart Star focuses on children bar through five, but with, with your support, we're able to expand our reach bar through adolescents.
Thank you.
And then finally, I want to wrap up by, um, inviting you to join us for our 13th Annual Celebration of Young Children. We'll be presenting Kids Fest at Roanoke Island Festival Park this Friday, May 6th, between 9:30 and 12:30. We're excited to welcome families, um, in the early childhood program back to this, uh, wonderful event. We have around 50 different activities and games planned for that day. It's a free event, and we invite anyone in our community to come out and join us. And we hope that you will join us even for part of that day. It's really a wonderful celebration, and it's a celebration of our community supporting young children. And with that, I'm available for any further questions.
Anyone have any questions, Sarah?
Do you do any co-mingling with the Friends of Youth program?
Uh, not directly. I mean, we, we serve on local task forces together. But we don't have any direct programs, so we're working together, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, Sarah, thank you for what all you and your group do. It's pretty amazing, the statistics and sure, really, really great work you do. So thank you for all of that.
Well, thank you. And again, thank you so much for your support. We could not do this without you.
And thank all your staff.
Yes, I was going to say, we've got the whole team here, that's right.
This is our CYP family. It really is, truly is.
Guys, I just had a quick, you're, we're talking about the price of gas and the price of diapers. I just Googled it, and I think it costs about $2,000 a year for diapers now.
Yeah.
Because diapers, at one time when the first in 2020, it was like between 20 and 30. Now they're between 20 and 60 per diaper. And then with the price of gas up, that's compounded the impact on a young family.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Yeah, it is. And that's just for one child.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and some families have multiple children. Um, so yeah, it is a great need, and it's something that we're able to address with the help of our, uh, community.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, ladies.
Yeah.
Senator Chairman, we'd move on to item eight in the agenda. This is a proclamation for EMS Week, which is May 15th through 21st. And do you have anything to add to that, Chief Collins, or just read the proclamation?
Read the proclamation. Um, I just would like to reinforce that. Good morning again.
Good morning.
The theme this year is, uh, Rising to the Challenge. And, you know, the last couple of years have been very tough for any entity that's in the healthcare community. And the EMS department has endured a lot of those challenges with the pandemic and, you know, changing how we're delivering services and everything. Thank you all, um, every member of the Board of Commissioners who supports the EMS department greatly. Uh, we look forward to some new facilities coming up also, so.
Sheriff, this is a proclamation to designate the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services is the community's medical care safety net, fills gaps and provides important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, to access telemedicine and performs lifesaving and time-critical interventions. And whereas emergency medical service personnel serve our community on the front lines, often with personal sacrifices of being away from their families on nights, weekends, and holidays in all types of weather environments, and face numerous personal risks and threats to ensure our community receives the best care possible. And whereas emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas this year's national theme for Emergency Medical Services Week is EMS Rising to the Challenge. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week. This the second day of May 2022.
Oh, to approve. Motion on the floor, my Vice Chairman to approve, has been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
I would also like to add, if we could, also locally to, uh, also put this remembrance of retired EMS captain Rita Door, who passed away recently.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Motion on the floor to approve. So those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes that? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Jenny.
Chairman, item nine on the agenda, Catherine Peel from the DOT Ferry Division here is here to present to you a grant application for the Ferry Division.
Good morning, Ms. Peel.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Catherine Peel. I'm the Planning and Development Manager for the North Carolina Ferry Division. Just right across the bridge in Mans Harbor is where my office is located. This morning, I'm asking for support in a grant application. So the Ferry Division, one of my responsibilities is all the grant applications for our division. So we have submitted for the FY 2022 Maritime Administration, which is part of the US DOT America's Highway Grant Program. We're able to apply for this program because back in 2020, we received a project designation through the Maritime Administration. That designation allows a certain number of group of maritime operators or facilities to be eligible for this opportunity. We're asking for $300,000. We will come up with the match requirement of 20%. And then the $240,000 will come from the Maritime Administration. And we will be looking to, um, as you know, Division One DOT did a feasibility study to identify the hotspots on NC Highway 12. One of their recommendations was to move the South Dock facility to the Pony Pens, which is closer to the Ocracoke Village. Great recommendation and plan. What it did not capture was the operational impact of the Ferry Division. So what will it take funding-wise, staff-wise, fuel, vessels? It's going to be a major change to our operation, so we need to quantify that and document that before any plans go further. So part one of this grant is to have that operation analysis completed. And then part two is looking at our Cherry Branch facility, which is in Havelock, North Carolina, to look at, we have field maintenance shops. We have three across the division plus the one at the shipyard. The Cherry Branch Maintenance Facility is more centrally located, has a further, a more pool of applicants. And so if we were able to increase the maintenance that can be performed at this location, it would reduce some stress on our own shipyard. So for all emergency repairs that need to come out of the water and may be a major repair in water, everything has to come to the shipyard, which can cause some backlogging. The Cherry Branch Facility, we would like to look at a feasibility and conceptual plan to what we can do to increase the maintenance that can be performed there, reducing downtime for Ocracoke and our other locations and saving time, fuel, and other maintenance costs. So I'm just asking for your support, for a letter of support to go along with our application to be submitted, um, on June 17th.
Thank you, Catherine. Bobby, you want to read that letter of support?
This is the letter of support. It says, "The North Carolina Ferry Division has applied for the US DOT Maritime Administration, FY 2022, Americans, America's Marine Highway Program Grant Opportunity. The NC DOT Ferry Division became a Maritime Administrative Highway Designated Project in 2020. This designation allows the Division to compete for specific MARAD, uh, grants such as this one. The project funding being applied for is to strengthen the access to Ocracoke Island through con- concept planning for Cherry Branch and South Dock facilities. Purpose: Completing an operational analysis of relocating the current south ferry terminal to an area closer to the village center of Ocracoke Island, known as the Pony Pens. South Dock has experienced severe erosion due to climate change and will be permanently unstable as a dock in the next 38 to 58 years. Based on Noah's sea level rise." unstable as a dock in the next 38 to 58 years, based on NOAA sea level rises, but sea level rise scenarios. Even without additional sea level, South Dock is often cut off by high flooding of NC 12, and ferry services are inaccessible for extended periods of time. A feasibility study of the dock relocation has been completed by NC DOT. However, an operational analysis is needed to understand the impacts to ferry operations, including the type and number of vessels, as well as the increased needs of staff, fuel, maintenance associated with the end terminal and the longer route. The Cherry Branch planning will include conducting a planning study, including conceptual site design for a depot-level maintenance facility at the existing Cherry Branch Terminal, which would add a second maintenance facility in an alternate, an alternate location to perform in water maintenance, to perform in-water maintenance to the vessels. The current facility at Mans Harbor has limited shipyard capacity, which creates challenges in meeting the needs for required regular maintenance and emergency repairs. Providing another facility would also allow for timely maintenance and continued rehabilitation of the fleet, aiding in system resiliency. We strongly support this application and recognize that the ferry system provides important transportation services in North Carolina, connecting people to jobs, education, and other services, while also supporting the movement of good and supplies. The ferry system is also instrumental in helping the region prepare for and respond to hurricanes and other disasters. We appreciate your consideration of this application. Sincerely, Robert Woodruff, Senior Chairman, Dare County Board of Commissioners."
Thank you, Bobby. Pleasure of the board to support this letter of recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bateman has been seconded by Vice Chairman. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got a question for you, sir. Kat, how much more, more travel estimated distance in time will it take for a ferry to get to the Pony Pens versus South Dock?
It's a great question. It'll be part of our analysis.
Right.
We're looking at what type of boat better, best to use. You know, right now, it's about an hour and 10 minutes. You're looking closer to an hour and 45 minutes.
Well, this, and I'm sure the study's going to tell you this too, but, but it just on the back of a sheet of paper does, is that ostensibly going to require additional ferries?
It's a great question. So we're part of the planning, right? Well, to look at that, so do we want to go with a larger class vessel? As you know, we run our sound class vessels to Ocracoke. Is that an option for us to run between Hatteras and this new location, which you wouldn't necessarily need more vessels? You would just need to transition to a larger fleet of vessels, a larger vessel to carry the same amount of vehicles at one time. And then making sure, what can we do to keep up with our historical departure schedule to, we have a lot of traffic, people are waiting in line. So we want to make sure that we're keeping a good departure schedule, what best type of vessel to use, and making sure that people aren't waiting too long.
When you, when you talk about going to a larger vessel, what does that, given what we just went through with sloop channel?
Right.
What does that do for us there?
So we're going to look at our channels, the, not the good thing. One of the things in our favor may be that as you're going back behind Ocracoke, it's a little bit deeper through this major sound area, instead of going through that sloop mainly Hatteras inlet area.
So you won't, you won't be doing the whole horseshoe and then, and then turning south. You would, you would take another route totally.
You bypass, you just keep going out, similar to our passenger ferry route. You go out, Rawlins, Rawlinson? Yeah, you got Rawlinson, and you take left, and you're going through that major portion of the sound, and then you keep going past South Dock. No right-hand turn into the horseshoe, none of that. You just bypass that down the sound route, and then you turn into, you would turn into what we refer to as Pony Pens.
Gotcha.
But the part of this will be looking at bathymetric surveys to see what we're up against.
Right.
And what kind of dredging would need to be done as well.
That's a good thing that you can bypass that, because that's, that's a consistent mess.
For the charter fleets and stuff down there, though, with access to the inlet, because all that maintenance, the sloop channel will be gone.
It would still, it would be under the Corps designation, and they would be responsible for dredging a sloop, which they are now as well.
But DOT does emergency declarations all the time to get the Corps there, and those emergency declarations would go away.
Yes.
But if it's a federally, but it, I mean, ultimately, that's going to be a federally designated area, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's what's.
That's the goal.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
That's what's currently in progress with the Army Corps.
And how imminent is that? You get that crystal ball out of me.
It literally takes an act of conference.
Right. I was, I was hearing at the last Waterways meeting that they're looking at the fall.
Okay, well, that's better than it was.
To have their paperwork completed.
Right.
As you look at your study, and if there's a potential to transition into a larger vessels, will the study also keep in mind the need for the sound class vessels in Rodanthie, because that's our emergency route as well?
Yes.
If you eliminate those, then we've got a problem.
We, so throughout the division, we wouldn't be going completely sound. We would have vessels ready and able to go from Rodanthie to Stumpy Point. We run the other smaller vessels along our river routes, so Southport, Cherry Branch, Panica River, and then Currituckinot Island. So we would still have those vessels around and able to support emergency activities.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you so much, Kat.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman, item 10 on the agenda is the presentation of the budget. Can we take about a five-minute break before I start that?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Call the meeting back to order, county manager.
Good morning. Today I'm going to present to you the budget. I apologize for having to read all this, but we're reading it to create a record and I know it's long and kind of dry and there's really no way to, for me at least, to make this less than dry. So bear with me. Again, this will follow our budget workshop and there's nothing different about this budget than what we discussed, other than, I'm not sure if it's in my message yet, but we were able to fund the lights that we talked about at First Flight Schools for those soccer fields and I think the ladies brought that up this morning. So there is going to be funding in the capital improvement plan to be able to cover those lights as well. So that is not something that's included in what I'm about to present to you, but it will be in the budget. With that said, I hereby present the recommended Dare County budget for fiscal year 2022-2023 in the amount of $213,456,649, with the general fund being $123,964,551 of that amount. The budget is balanced and is in compliance with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act and is aligned with the priorities and direction given by the Board of Commissioners at our workshop. The purpose of the county's annual budget process is to develop a fiscally responsible plan that enables the county to accomplish priorities established by the Board at a prior retreat. The Board provided the following strategic focus areas. Long-term financial planning for capital. You ask us to maintain the capital planning and stabilization of available funding, the use of a capital investment fund and a long-term capital planning and debt affordability model. Economic development, you continue beach nourishment efforts, address the demand for future projects and determine additional project prioritization criteria using a beach nourishment and debt affordability model. And to continue efforts towards affordable and workforce housing through zoning and planning and changes and various projects with the assistance of the state of North Carolina and the development financial initiative of the UNC School of Government. In education, you ask us to continue partnering with the Dare County Schools using an agreed-upon formula for local current expense and the Capital Improvement Fund to adequately address the future capital needs and to expand the College of the Albemarle Dare County Campus through a completed capital project and utilization of the Dare Guarantee, which is a county-funded scholarship program. In our human resources, you ask us to implement improvements in salaries, benefits and working environments and prepare to implement results of an in-process salary and benefit study anticipated to be completed in the fall of 2022 by Evergreen Solutions. You ask us to maintain all current levels of services. To do that, the recommended budget includes no property tax increases, preserves the high quality of service delivery to citizens, property owners and visitors, and addresses the goals of the Board. The 2023 budget is an update to a planned 2023 budget that we prepared over a year ago. Note that the comparison to 2021 and 2022 must consider the uncertain and the then-expected negative effects of revenues from COVID-19 on the 2021 adopted budget, where the total budget decreased by 5.59% and the general fund budget decreased by 1.53%. Those negative effects were short-lived for Dare County, with higher-than-normal tourism levels beginning in June of 2000 and continuing to date. The 2022 budget assumed a return to normal tourism and economic activity levels. The 2023 budget assumes that the elevated activity of the prior two years represents a new normal. The following table shows the original 2021 budget, the original 2022 budget, the requested 2023, and the requested is what was requested by the department heads, and then the manager's 2023 budget, which is the budget that we propose and are presenting to you today. In the past, the capital improvement plans were completed after the budget adoption. The managers' 2022 and 2023 budgets have included the recommended capital improvement plans, the Capital Investment Fund and the Water CIP Fund in the presentation. So let's look at the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget. What's planned and requested? After budget requests were submitted by the departments and outside agencies, the requested expenditures exceeded budget revenues, creating a budget fund deficit of $1,785,247. That 1.7 million were the additional requests over those included in the planned 2023 budget that we created over a year ago and which was $3.6 million, or 3.25% higher than the previous year 2022 budget that we adopted. The major items included for these increases were $717,000 to increase the local current expense for the Dare County Schools, $43,261 to increase local current expenses for the College of the Albemarle, $19,000 for animal shelter operations, $264,949 for operating costs for tax assessment EMS and non-departmental in the airport, $1,415,819 for salary and fringes due to the prior-year merit increases, the 2023 merit plan, an 11% increase in the employer retirement rate, a 5% increase in the health plan, and the new year merit. $199,102 for retiree health benefits, $491,430 in EMS for six new positions consisting of three EMT intermediates, two EMT paramedics, and one EMT lieutenant, $61,169 in facilities maintenance for a new facilities maintenance technician position, $27,157 to various departments for vehicle maintenance and shop operations, and $244,527 for insurance costs. The manager's recommended budget is as follows. The recommended budget does not include a property and tax increase, maintains the current property tax rate of 40.05 cents. The details of the manager's budget are found in the following pages, and I'll go through those. In addition to the terms in the above section, the following expenditure changes make up 97% of the net general fund increases over the planned budget of $7 million, over the planned budget, which is in the amount of $7,594,701. Discussion of the major items in the following expenditures section. These expenditures are $2,221,762 for a 5% cost-of-living pay adjustment for full-time and part-time benefit-eligible employees, $1,035,284 for a 3% employer 401K contribution, $733,521 for an additional increase over the planned budget for Dare County Schools, local current expense funding, which includes $250,000 for additional teacher supplements. The total local current expense increase for the schools from 2022 is $1,450,724. We have $698,593 for a salary step plan for employees to be implemented with the salary study upon the recommendations of the consultants that we have, $500,000 reserved for the implementation of the in-progress salary study, $400,000 to transfer to the construction and demolition landfill for operating and landfill closure costs, $278,493 for various salary and fringe changes during the 2022, and to budget vacant positions at mid-grade, $275,000 to contract for annual large item collection, $205,502 for new EMS lieutenant positions, $184,041 for three new telecommunications positions in communications, $183,175 for increased operating costs over the 14 departments, $122,500 for sheriff operating cost, $87,800 for detention center operating cost, $80,010 for stormwater retention and pond management at county facilities, $68,643 for a new ground maintenance crew leader position, $58,169 for a server cost in the communications, which are funds that are no longer paid by the E911 fund, $53,369 for a new transportation driver position, $34,296 for the county share of a nine-county liability for retiree health benefits from the former Albemarle Mental Health Center, $32,960 for increased local current expenses for the College of the Albemarle. On the revenue side, let's look at the current year revenue projections. The worst revenue effects from COVID-19 occurred in April and May of 2020. Since June of 2020, Dare County has seen unprecedented visitation and economic activity as demonstrated in the following table. Our revenue assumptions for 2023 are the tax base increased to a taxable value of $17.05. Our year projected revenue is at $66,464, using the same tax rate of 40.05 cents and a collection rate of 99.68 cents, which is up slightly from last year's collection rate of 98.25%.
What does that equal, Bobby? Do you have the number there on the property tax revenue?
The projected revenue based on a 99.68% collection rate is $68,206,464.
And prior year was 60...
Prior years, I don't know what the collection rate is, but I don't have that number.
No, just...
67,236,491.
Okay. That's on a different chart.
Okay, 67, that's 22, well, that's 22 original. That's not what it is.
I'll get you that, Commissioner Ross. I don't know what that number was.
All right, thank you.
Right. On the sales tax side, our sales tax are projected, using the NC Legal Municipalities' projections for 2022, they're projected at 10.75% over 2021 and 2023, and at an additional 3.75% over 2022. And then the Oxy tax is projected for 2023 at 1% over the projected 2022 amount. And I'll get you those numbers as well, Commissioner Ross. The average county property tax rate in North Carolina for the 2021, which is the latest that we have available, was 68 cents with a low of 33 cents and a high of $1. Dare County at 40.05 cents was the fifth lowest property tax rate in the state. The effective tax rate, which is adjusted for the sales-to-assessment ratio for each county, and Dare's effective rate for 2020, which again is the latest we have available, was 39.24 cents, which again ranked the sixth lowest in the state. Again, the average there was 64.13 cents with a low of 28.17 and a high of 1.01. Dare County's rate for 2023 of 40.05 would be the fifth lowest rate of all 2021 tax rates. And we've moved on, but you saw some charts that showed that. Next, we'll look at the fund balance appropriation. In the fund balance, the 2023 appropriated fund balance is $3,117,326. It's within the Board accept adopted policy of 3% or less of expenditures at 2.51%. The 2021 fund balance ended the year at a total of $72,347,456. The 2021 unassigned fund balance ended the year at $34,368,497, which was $9,960,193 over the Board policy minimum of 21%, and that represented a 29.5% unappropriated fund balance amount. Potential uses will be presented for consideration by the Board at a later board meeting. Staff is awaiting the American Rescue Plan guidance from the UNC School of Government before making any further recommendations. All items discuss changes from the 2022 budgets, including those originally planned and those in the updated recommendation. On our expenditure side, we're looking at personnel. All personnel recommendations are made in light of the current employment market conditions. Currently, 7.5% of the county positions are vacant, and the employee turnover rate to date for the current year is 13.48%. Current vacancy percentages are 56% in recycling, 31% in facilities maintenance, 20% in the detention center, 19 in social services and home aids. Turnover has been particularly elevated in public works departments, which use CDL drivers, with sanitation at 18.18% and at the transfer station at 22.22% and in recycling at 54.55%. In the health plan, the health plan has a 5% projected increase for 2023. This increase includes enhancements approved by the Board on April 1st. Those include an increase to the employer HSA plan contribution, a decrease in the PPO plan copayment for specialist visits. The county continues to promote its wellness program and has expanded hours and coverage for its partnership with the Outer Banks Hospital for the Employee Wellness and Health Clinic Program. For our position changes in this budget, we have new positions in 2022 that are recommended. They include nine in EMS, which are three EMT intermediates, two EMT paramedics, three EMT lieutenants. We have three telecommunicators in communications. We have a facilities maintenance technician in facilities maintenance, a grounds maintenance crew leader in grounds maintenance, a transportation driver in transportation, a financial reporting and FEMA insurance specialist, which is funded 40% out of the finance department and 60% out of the risk management fund. In employee compensation, the Board has contracted for a salary study prepared by Evergreen Solution. That study is expected to be completed this fall. The 2023 recommends the following in employee compensation: a 5% cost-of-living increase for full-time and part-time benefits, eligible employees at 2.221,762, a 3% employer 401K plan contribution of $1,035,284, a grade step plan to address salary compression of $698,593, $500,000 reserved to begin to address salary study recommendations due later in the year, and $557,552 to continue the merit plan with a change in the merit plan to make it a one-time bonus. That was done, given that we're looking at doing a step plan, we didn't need both. $119,500 increase for the general fund share of the retiree Medicare cost is included in the non-departmental. The employer retirement system contribution rate increased again for 2023, resulting in an increase of $533,453. On the capital side, we have a capital outlay sheet that's attached for approved capital outlays that are budgeted in the Capital Investment Fund. I'll discuss some of those in the following section. And again, I'll tell you what I told you at the beginning. As we go through this, the lighting, the $850,000 for the lighting at the First Fleet Middle School is in the budget but will not be in what I'm going to present to you now. For Dare County Schools, the funding of the local current expense used the current school funding formula agreed upon in 2016, resulting in an increase of $1,200,524. That increase is due to a CPI rate of 8.1%. An additional increase of $250,000 is recommended to increase teacher supplements, bringing the total increase to $1,450,534, which is a 6.07% increase. Local funding for school operating costs increases to $26,661,307, which is composed of, again, $25,341,481 for local current expense, $1,319,826 for county-employed school nurses and school resource officers. Pupil enrollment projections are, the NC DPI projection for the fall of 2021 was 5,320 students. The actual ADM for the fall of 2021 turned to be 5,104 students. The NC DPI projection for the fall of 2022 is 5,171 students.
Just by context, Bobby, that works out with all funding sources, including our $25 million, to just over $12,600 per student invested annually in Dare County Schools. I mean, I'd just throw that out just because it's not necessarily an obvious number, but $12,600 per student is a healthy funding.
If you're looking at, if you're just looking at the straight, what are we paying for the local current expense, then that number is $5,171 per student, which is one of the top ones in the state as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, for the last 11 years, 2013 through 2023, local current expense funding, excluding the school nurses and resource officers, and the five-year annual deferred maintenance funding for 2015 through 2019, has increased by about 29.55% from $19,560,000 to $25,341,000. Over the same period, the pupils have increased by 4.85% from $4,932 to $5,171. And then... So next is the schools' fund balance. The 2016 funding agreement included a target school general fund balance of $1 million. Due to prudent management and use of the CARES Act funds grant, the schools' fund balance of the general fund ended, thank you, ended 2021 at $3,668,117, which was obviously in excess of the $1 million that we had included in their budget. The only method available under state law for them to return the excess fund balance to the state is simply to reduce the annual local current expense appropriation with an equal and concurrent appropriation to the fund balance by Dare County Schools for one year only. Therefore, the budget for the above local current expense for 2023 is $2,668,117 less. The budget reduction is used for a one-time cost. On their budget, it washes and then we get the excess fund balance back, and we've used that for a number of the one-time fees, the one-time costs that we've got in this budget. Next year, that number will go back to the normal number without that reduction. And the school system is aware of that, and we've been through that with them. For our various departments, the College of the Albemarle, the budget maintains $250,000 for the local scholarship to the College of the Albemarle, which has been a Board priority. The budget adds $95,568 for additional operating costs for the just-opened 37,000-square-foot COA facility. In communications, we added $184,000 for three telecommunicator positions to reduce overtime and to allow the staff to use the leave that they were having to accumulate due to shortages. We have $58,169 to pay for a server cost that is no longer paid by the E911 fund. In the detention center, we have $87,800 for operating costs. Starting and minimum detention officer salaries are adjusted with no budget costs as well. Those added costs are, for the most part, inflationary and also anticipating greater numbers in our jails than we had during COVID. In emergency medical services, we added $696,932 for continuation of the staffing plan that we've talked about through multiple budgets and to staff the Kitty Hawk Station in 2023. And we increased the staff by three EMTs, two paramedics, three lieutenants. And we also had a $212,541 reduction in the overtime pay budget, which covers the cost of two of the three lieutenant positions. Facilities maintenance, we had an increase of $61,000 for a new maintenance tech position. In ground maintenance, we had an increase of $68,000 for a new crew leader position. In the health department, the net cost in the department decreased overall by $182,569. The budget does add the reinstatement of the dental van program, a new overdose response coordinator position, and a new substance abuse probation officer position. In the non-departmental, $32,296 is added to the county share of a nine-county liability for retiree health benefits with the former Albemarle Mental Health Center. This payment will continue for the next four years, so that at the end of five, when we expect the current funding that is in place to fund those liabilities will be gone, we'll have enough saved to pay our share of the seven-county cost. Public works, we had $80,000 for stormwater retention pond management at county facilities. In recycling, we added $275,000 to order and contract for large item pickup door-to-door. We're going to do large item pickup with private contractors into the future, simply because we don't have the staffing and the resources to do it as we've done in the past. And we did it this year, and it worked very well, so that has been an improvement. In the Sheriff's Department, we added $122,500 for increased operating costs. In our transfers to other fund, the transfer to the Capital Investment Fund is maintained at the Board policy of the 2019 amount of $10,425,000. The $2,668,000 one-time local current expense reduction to Dare County Schools is used to make one-time transfers of $2 million to a stormwater fund and $668,000 to the inlet maintenance fund for the county's responsibility for Army Corps of Engineering dredge spoil sites. A new $400,000 transfer to the construction and demolition landfill is included and is per the recommendation of a solid waste study performed by Raftellus Financial Consulting. The transfer, along with annual tipping fee increases, will eliminate annual deficits and will restrict at least $50,000 per year for future and will restrict at least fifty thousand per year for future landfill closure costs. Two thousand twenty-three budget maintains by function are shown in red and compared in the charts. And as you can see from this pie chart, roughly a third of the budget is public safety, about twenty percent is education. There are two largest ones, and you have a couple of charts, I think. Is there a bar chart that follows today that, that gives you those numbers in the same, in a different format? Again, this year, we've got our capital improvement plan along with our budget, so we're going to do those all together when we move forward with the budget at one of our next meetings. The capital investment fund is a separately budgeted part of the general fund for financial reporting purposes. The capital investment fund is consolidated into the general fund in the annual audit report, along with the disaster recovery fund and the, and the OSA fund. In the information section, we have more detail on those. In conjunction with the capital investment fund, the county and its financial advisor, DEC Associates, maintain a capital planning and debt affordability model that we follow. Using a capital investment fund separates budgeting operations from that of capital. The general fund's contribution to the capital investment fund was set by the board in two thousand nineteen. Net general fund cost for debt service and capital outlays is ten million four hundred twenty-five thousand. Our model development is complete and is the basis for the two thousand twenty-three capital improvement plan. In the two thousand twenty-three budget, recommended budget, the model includes plans for major items, which is roof repair replacements, heating and air conditioning replacements, major equipment replacement, and major maintenance for the Dare Med Flight Airbus helicopter. The two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-seven recommended capital improvement plan is in the information section, and a capital improvement ordinance for two thousand twenty-three projects is included for adoption. The county's sixty-five percent share of the local transfer tax is restricted to the use for the capital, capital-related and debt service for capital. With the general fund's transfer, they are the two primary sources of funding for the capital investment fund. Two thousand twenty-three revenue is conservatively budgeted at seven point five greater than the two thousand twenty actual or two, or two point two-five percent per year. Two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two revenue increases have allowed for additional projects and for planned project schedules to be accelerated. The CIP and the debt affordability models were updated to maintain the board's priority projects for EMS facilities in two thousand twenty-two and the replacement of all public works facilities in two thousand twenty-three. The EMS facilities project was approved in two thousand twenty-two, and an architect was selected and is under contract with programming work near completion. A construction management at risk will be selected within two months, and the local government commission will be asked to approve a construction draw program debt issuance by the fall. It is anticipated that the construction draw debt will be replaced with limited obligation bonds in two thousand twenty-four. The projects recommended for the two thousand twenty-three CIP are as follows. All amounts are pay-as-you-go unless noted as debt-funded. Twenty-five million, I'm sorry, twenty-five thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars for HVAC replacements at the Dare Center at the Kill Devil Hills Recreation Park. Five hundred fifty thousand for major equipment. This is complete replacement of the AV system and screens in communications and the EOC and for information technology computers. Hundred seventy-three thousand three hundred forty for Dare Med Flight major maintenance using the Airbus H Care program. Five hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred five for local capital outlay for Dare County Schools. One million seven hundred ninety thousand for CIP funding for Dare County Schools. Six hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-three financed over a five-year term for public works equipment. One hundred fifteen thousand, that's for a, a backhoe.
Bobby?
Yes, sir.
Just a clarification on the Dare County Schools. Is that a transfer to their CIP, or is there like a large project in that one million seven ninety? Do we know?
So, Dave may be able to tell you what the one seven ninety, but it's all in our, we, we incorporate their capital improvement fund into our corp, our fund so that we could plan and manage and prioritize theirs versus ours. What the breakdown of that one point seven is, I don't know if I know.
I, I wasn't try, I was just wondering if there was some major project I might have forgotten.
I think it's more than one project.
Just a bunch of projects. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. We've got two hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars for a loader, ninety-six thousand one hundred sixty-one for a green climber, one hundred eighty-three thousand for an excavator, one hundred twenty-six thousand dollars for state law compliant voting machines, a hundred thousand for administration building server room UPS replacement, two hundred eighty thousand for additional funding to complete the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two sewer project for the detention center, fifty-four thousand for a pump for the C and D landfill dirt pit, five hundred thousand for the detention center renovations. The scope's going to be determined by the, our county architect as we move forward. I do have, Dave did get the eight hundred and fifty, and so I have eight hundred and fifty thousand for light installation at the athletic fields behind First Flight High School, Middle Schools. And then we have thirty thousand, nine hundred thousand for replacement of the Manio in Buxton Public Works facilities. The cost for Manio is per the architectural feasibility study by Oakley-Coggan Association with one million added for Buxton, as the permitted scope of the work is yet to be determined at that site. The board has improved the policy for the capital investment fund and debt affordability model of maintaining an ending fund balance of not less than point three-three times annual debt service with a target of point five times. The recommended two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-six CIP is projected to result in the following coverages that are shown on that chart, and you can see they don't go below one in any given year. Coverage is maintained at one point oh times or higher due to the past volatility in land transfer tax revenues, including four annual consecutive decreases of twenty-nine, thirty-five, twenty, and twenty-nine percent in two thousand six through two thousand nine. A second CIP and capital project ordinance is included for the adoption for the two thousand twenty-four estimates for ambulances and sanitation trucks. Delivery times have drastically increases, and this step will allow the order but not the delivery prior to July of two thousand twenty-three. For our other funds, in our disaster recovery fund, it's separately budgeted as a part of the general fund as well. It's bud, it's budget for software disaster recovery services of a hundred thousand for the initial response to any emergency. We have a board policy is to maintain an ending disaster recovery balance of one percent of the general fund budget. At the end of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, that percentage was one point three-nine percent. In our E nine-one-one fund, the budget may be revised by the county as funding reconsideration request to be considered by the E nine-one-one board on April of two thousand twenty-nine. What that means is they decreased our funding in a way that we didn't agree with, and so we're working with them to reestablish that funding, and so that number may change if we're successful in our discussions with them. On our beach nourishment fund, the beach nourishment fund is set per the beach nourishment financial model. Two thousand twenty-three expenditures are elevated as, as it is the one year where it's an overlap of debt service for the original Buxton initial projects with the debt service for the two thousand twenty-two summer maintenance projects for the same areas. The town's maintenance project will occur the summer of two thousand twenty-two. The maintenance project for Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk and Duck, and as a new project for Southern Shores. The contractors' weeks Marines and mobilization will start May first. The county maintenance projects are for Buxton and the new project Avon. They will also occur in the summer of two thousand twenty-three. The contractors Great Lakes, Great Lakes Dredge and Dock, and that mobilization begins in May first as well. Next is the construction and demolition landfill fund. The county, the county contracted with Raftellus Financial Consulting to perform solid waste study through the creation of a solid waste model for the C and D fund and the sanitation fund. Significant cost increases have resulted in fund deficits without accumulating any restricted funds for future landfill closure and post-closure liabilities. The budget reflects the report recommendations with an increase in the tipping fees and an annual transfer from the general fund to four hundred, four hundred thousand and the restriction of fifty thousand dollars for landfill closure liability. I will tell you, in that fund, in the past, we have looked at contracting that out in an effort to reduce those costs that continue to rise, and what we found was the, the bidders who looked at that said they couldn't touch it at our cost. So, any private sector use there would exceed what we already have in cost, and so we just have to cover those increased costs. In the sanitation fund, the sanitation tax rate is increased by a penny from nine percent to two percent. The Raftellus reporting model plans a one, a one cent increase in three of the, of the four following years to three, thirteen percent, thirteen cents by two thousand twenty-seven. I'll tell you that in past budget presentations, maybe the last four at least, we've talked about the fact that we, the cost increases in sanitation were going up greater than our revenues, but that we had excess fund balance, and so we, rather than raise the rates as time went on, we reduced the amount of that fund balance and basically subsidized the rate because we had more fund balance than we needed. With this model, we're now, where I told you we would be at some point, is that the fund balance can't continue to subsidize necessitating a rate increase. And so we ask them to model it at the minimum increase we could over the short amount of time, and that's the one cent for four out of the next five years. And so that's what we've done, and that follows sort of what we've done with the water model as well. That study also recommended that the county switch to a higher-grade and more expensive truck chassis with a longer life and lower maintenance cost, resulting in lower lifetime costs. The two thousand twenty-three budget also includes, as per the study, a higher number of truck replacements, five instead of three, and financing those trucks over fifty-nine months instead of thirty-six months. We were buying cheaper trucks with the idea that we would replace them more often and save on, on our costs, on our maintenance costs, because we wouldn't have to do much maintenance before we got rid of them. What we found was, we didn't think that was holding true. We asked them to go in and run the models for us, and they did, and that's how they recommended going to the more expensive and longer-lasting trucks. The cost of the more expensive trucks is less than the, the maintenance cost we would pay in the cheaper trucks, and so that's the direction we're headed. In the water fund, it was updated for two thousand twenty-three as well, and it shows an annual two percent rate increase over the next five years. That is the same rate model and the same level of increases that we've had for a number of years in the budget, and it follows the model. You have before you some graphs that show you sort of how the water financial plan is broken down between our operations, our pay go, our debt, and our revenues. You've got the coverage models as well, and then you've got some fund balances on one of the slides as well. The recommended water CIP is included in the budget document for approval. The projects recommended for two thousand twenty-three are as follows, and they're all pay-as-you-go. One point three million for continuation of the automated meter reading system, two hundred seven thousand six hundred for roof and siding replacements for the Rodanthie plant, eighty-five thousand for the electro and equipment upgrades at Stumpy Point, three hundred eighty thousand for upgrades to the Hatteras Plant, well communication and fiber optics, hundred eighty thousand to control upgrades to the Connington Pump Station, one million to replace the water main between Avon and Buxton. As you may recall, that's the main that we've had break a couple of times. We put relief valves on it to try to mitigate the breakage. It's, it has helped, but it hasn't completely solved. This will replace that line and hopefully solve that problem permanently. And then we have ninety-seven thousand five hundred for a well at the Skycote Plant. The water CIP plans for two thousand twenty-four revenue bond issue of five million four hundred thousand plus the cost of closure. In our internal service funds, the county maintains two of these. One is the internal, is the insurance fund, and the other is the fleet, fleet maintenance fund. As we discussed under the general fund, the health plan has a five percent projected increase for two thousand twenty-three. The county has also switched to a high deductible worker, workers' compensation plan and continues to work with a contracted consultant, risk versi on our insurance issue. In the fleet maintenance fund, it's projected to maintain its fund balance of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. So in conclusion, the board has requested to hold a public hearing on the budget during the board meeting on May sixteenth. The board may schedule additional workshops or adopt the budget at any time after the public hearing. I want to thank the board for providing the direction to staff and for you to work in the workshop to help us prepare this, and I appreciate all of our department heads and our finance department and their team for helping us put this together. This is a huge undertaking in, in a sixty-to-ninety-day period that we work on this, and, and those guys have really worked hard to, to accomplish this, and you all make it easy because you make your objectives clear and, and make sure we know where you're headed. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions, Bobby? If not, then I guess we schedule a public hearing for May sixteenth, correct?
Correct.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman. Set a public hearing for May sixteenth. It's been seconded by the vice chairman and, I believe, Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, say five, saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bobby. Dave? You need a few minutes, county man?
I'm good, I just need to get a swallow of water.
Lot of talking there, county manager.
Yeah. I have eleven on the gin that, I've, I've got it generically as affordable housing. We have two affordable housing projects that we're working on. We have two contracts that we're working on. I need to talk a little bit about both of them. I'll talk first about the one with coastal affordable housing, which is the larger of the two. That's the thirty-five million dollars that we have. We've met, I don't know how many times, a bunch of times, and we've talked on the phone a bunch of times, and we've been working really hard trying to get this thing moving. Some of you all have met with coastal affordable housing as well. Commissioner Ross and I have met with them. I know some of the others of you have met with them, and we've met with them together, all trying to work through the issues, and, and we're at a point where we need to get going. Interest rates are going up, the cost materials are going up, and so all the time that we waste is time that we could be putting in projects. And so what we've done is we've worked towards an agreement with them, and we've talked about, and I'll hit the highlights of that agreement. And it's basically a pre-development plan. It seemed like we didn't get wrapped around the horn on the pre-development stuff. We were getting wrapped around the horn on the post-developed stuff when we got ready to build. We were talking about, you know, how many units, what's going to be the breakdown of the, of the number of units? How many bedrooms is it going to have? What's going to be the rent? What percent of AMI? What's going to be in the covenants? How do we ensure that they do what we say we're going to do? All of those details that are sort of what you have to have before you build it, but some of that stuff, they can't answer for us, like how many units, until they know how much they're going to pay for their land, and they know what their site plan is going to look like, and they know how much infrastructure they got to put in for sewer or water or roads or, or whatever. And so they need to do some work along those lines upfront. And so the, where we are now is we've got an agreement that says we're going to put some money aside out of the thirty-five million to do that work, and in that five million will cover the, what we're calling the pre-development work to find out the answers to all those questions. And then when the pre-development phases gets to the end, when they've got a piece of land tied up under contract, we know those costs, they've done their work, their site plan, preliminaries, all that stuff, and they can give us numbers. Before we go another step past that, we'll have to enter another agreement, which is the development plan, and that development plan then has all that stuff in it that we've been talking about for, you know, the last month or so and trying to work out. We have a, a rough framework of that, but we can't firm that up into an agreement form until they have more information and we have more information to make decisions on. And so to move this forward, the, the number that we talked about was there about five, not to exceed five million dollars for the pre-development cost. Those pre-development costs could be less than that, and if they are, that's great, but we would be agreeing that we would spend at least five million, not more than five million dollars of that thirty-five towards these costs of pre-development. Is there any risk in that? Well, I'd say practically there, there is not, but from a lawyer who, you know, you look, it goes behind trees, if for some reason the project never got built, and we didn't bring in someone else to build it, and nothing ever happened on affordable housing, then we would be responsible for that five million that we put out of a grant towards affordable housing that never got built. I think that's highly unlikely. I think that risk is small, but again, assuming for whatever reason we got to a place where we never got to the construction phase, then we will have expended grant funds for a grant purpose. we will have expended grant funds for a grant purpose. And there are some risks that we would have to repay that, given that we didn't achieve any affordable housing for that.
I, I, I'm inclined to agree with everything you've just said. I'm trying to recall, were there a couple of significant components to the up to but not to exceed 5 million? My memory is failing me on that. Which categories of pre-development expenditure we would be needing to fund?
There were. I mean, the architectural and the site plan were going to be significant. And then some of the down payments they got to make to tie up a piece of property so that they can actually go do the work on it is going to be significant too. And then there's a lot of, just a lot of stuff. I mean, a lot of staff time, a lot of sitting down, doing work with engineers and architects and builders to make, make it, get it to a point where we can ask, answer the questions that we've been asking consistently and through no fault of them, that we hadn't really got clear answers on, because they can't give us the numbers we need to make those decisions.
So some part of that would be cash flow, i.e. down payment to secure property as opposed to current expense, funding the actual operations or costs, labor, et cetera, of engineering, design?
It would effectively be any expense associated with this project that doesn't go into construct, that you need to do before you can close on a piece of property and start construction.
Right. But I'm clarifying that a down payment on property toward the purchase price is different from the hourly expense of architects and engineers. That's what I'm differentiating.
Well, and it's an escrow, so you put down some amount of money for your due diligence. And then if you do your due diligence and you don't want to buy the property, you get your due diligence money back.
There you go. That's what I'm trying to differentiate between. Okay.
So, so with all that said, what, what I'm asking, and that contract, again, is in a rough draft form. We've been working on it. There's some changes that I need to make to it that clean it up.
This is the pre-development contract?
The pre-development contract. But what I need from you all is authorization to move forward with that pre-development contract, and which will include the not to exceed number, and which will have a schedule of those expenses associated, attached to it so that it's not whatever they say or whatever gets pulled out of the pool. It's, if there's a, be a list of
That's what I was going to ask you for. Thank you.
Expenses on, attached to it.
Does that five meetings, does it include purchasing the plan?
It does not.
No, okay, no.
What'll happen is, is we'll go through this pre-development stage, and they'll do all their legwork and all that. It's kind of like we do when we hire Oakley Collier to come in and draw up all the plans for all these EMS stations. And you all, we have a bunch of meetings, and we approve them, and we look at the site plan, and then we look at all this stuff. And then they go out and get one of the contractors to give you a number, and then you authorize Dave to borrow the number so that we can move forward. That's what we're doing here. We're doing all that stuff so that we get to a point where we know what that is, where we can do our development agreement. And then when we've done the development agreement, they can then close on the property. Now they've got a piece of property. They've got plans that they've been through at some level of approval, approval or not. And then we can move forward with the project and begin giving them draws towards the construction cost as they move forward. And so with that, if you authorize me to enter into that agreement with them with the changes that I need to make to it, as well as, again, with that limit of not to exceed 5 million dollars, then I don't have to wait two weeks to come back to you as he and I work through the nits in this contract to, to get it done and get them moving.
So move.
There's, it's contingent on that. Go ahead.
Okay.
We don't have the money yet, and so
Well, not, not, bu- budget. They'd also authorize you to do a grant project ordinance within that housing fund for that same amount.
Yeah. You're asking them to do that, or they've already done that?
They have not done that yet.
Okay, so then we need to do that this morning as well.
Right.
Okay. And so, and then, again, that contract is contingent upon our receipt of the funds because state haven't given us the funds yet.
So it's a grant project ordinance to obtain the funds from the state. And secondly, authorization for you to spend those funds in cooperation or collaboration with coastal affordable housing. Two steps?
So there's three, three steps.
Three steps.
So, so there's, you're going to authorize me to enter the contract.
Okay.
You're going to auth, you're going to approve a, a, a ordinance that allows us to spend the money, and then you're going to authorize me to spend based upon that ordinance. Is that right, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Last two confuse me. I'm doing an ordinance.
You're doing a project ordinance that says there's going to be 5 million dollars in a fund that Dave creates to go towards the preliminary part of, of affordable housing. The third step is the county manager's authorized to spend out of that fund pursuant to that contract.
Okay.
It's
Just straightforward as always. Yes, sir. Got it.
And we've got, and we've got a meeting today to talk to the state about draws.
Commissioner Ross, those aren't our rules. I'm sorry.
No, I'm just trying to absorb all of the
The maker of the motion has included everything you've said, just in the second agrees. Any further discussion?
So what's the timeframe from this point on until we get information back?
Get information back?
Yeah.
You mean from the state?
But, well, we hope to have this agreement entered, we hope to have this agreement entered this week, have this part of it done so they can start doing their preliminary stuff. When they complete that, I'm going to have to come back to you with a, the development agreement. I'll, I'll ask them. I don't know how long it takes you to get from now.
Sticks in the grill.
How long does it take to get from now to development?
2023.
So four months will be back to you to enter, sometime between now and four months, we're going to come back to you with the, the development agreement. And what they're saying is they close on the land in four months, and that would be when they could start breaking ground. I talked with them this morning. They're telling us that by the summer
2023.
Of 2023, they hope to be completed. So we're
With the project.
With the project.
350 plus.
And, and we're anticipating 350 units or so.
350 plus, give or take, plus.
The reason I was asking, because you know, you started off the presentation
I know, I'm not kidding.
I know.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
So the reason I was asking, you know, we started off with the comments of interest rates going up, cost of building, cost, everything's going. It's not going to stop, you know?
Well, I'm not certain of that, Commissioner Bateman. I just want to put a quick comment. If, I've been following a lot of the news items, and the probability of a recession, escalating interest rates from the Federal Reserve, restricted borrowing, and less demand could well be a, a, what would you call it? A, a sort of slowdown mechanism, or a governor on this runaway, everything's going to go up. When mortgages reach six or seven percent, housing will, will come back down. And the Fed is very, very concerned about a recession coupled with a too rapid escalation of interest rates. So I'm, I'm trying to balance both because there's a lot of truth in what was just said. But the other side of it is if we slow it down enough, the economy regressed at one and a half percent negative growth last quarter. So.
I guess there's, there's another side of that as well, Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
And that is the product. And trying to get the product to the site is going to drive cost up. Because the product is way lagging. Product is way lagging.
Well, we're trying to
And that's going to drive the cost.
There's time built into this that we can't help. This is something we can't control. And as quickly as we can do our part, it speeds that process along as they can't do their part till they, till we turn loose money.
I get it. I'm just trying to
Any other, good point? Any other question? Okay, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes in? Motion carries unanimous.
That would take us to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes. You have the Health and Human Services, Public Health, Dental, Van Maintenance and Ultrasound Equipment Purchase, Tax Collector Report, Budget Amendment for Transferring from the Leosa Fund to the Leosa Irrevocable Trust. You have a budget amendment to close the NC, to close the NC Office of Recovery and Resiliency Grant Fund. You have sanitation, fuel and maintenance and repair of vehicles. You have the sanitation dumpster purchase and sales. You have a sanitation truck rental. You have Dare County Tourism Board Request Consent Expenditure from Long-Term Unappropriate Grant Fund Line, Item 4585.
Motion to approve. It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes in? Motion carries unanimous.
Sheriff, next are your board appointments. You have the Dare County Board of Adjustment. Shelley Jones, her term expires this month, and she'd like to be reappointed. Pat Weston is recommended to fill the vacancy in the Hatteras Island.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board here?
Recommendation to Pat Weston.
What about, and reappoint? And reappoint Ms. Jones?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to reappoint Ms. Jones and to appoint Ms. Weston for the, for the vacancy of the Hatteras Island. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes in? Motion carries unanimous.
And then next is your Veterans Advisory Board. The terms of Steve Goodhart and Ellen Adok expire this month. Ellen Adok would like to be reappointed. Stephen Goodhart does not wish to be reappointed, and the board has recommended James Scroggen be appointed in his place.
Motion to approve.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes in? Motion carries unanimous.
That be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item 14, Commissioner's business. Like to ask the vice chairman if he would kick, kick that off this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, as always do is thank our service pin recipients for their 95 years of service. And when you think about 95 years, you think about a, you'd have a page full of folks. This is actually four people. That's, that's pretty impressive in terms of length of service for the individuals. And our employee of the month, Avery Whitfield, for her 20 years as well. With regard to the, to the green space initiative, I, I thought that was a, a well-presented plan. I think that we, and it's in a sidebar conversation with chairman, certainly need to include the municipalities in this discussion prior to their 2023 budgets, because I don't, I don't think they were asking that the county do that whole, that whole deal. And certainly the municipality is going to benefit from that. So if there's some discussion that can be had, County Manager and Mr. Chairman with them in, in y'all's respective meetings with those leaders, it'd be helpful, I think.
If you recall, in our, in our budget workshop, we talked about, we already had in place where Oakley Collier had gone in and done some looking at our rec facilities and our upgrade. And we got a number that shocked all of us. And I think we said, let's go get a study done. Let's get somebody to look at this and see what we need to be doing so that if we're going to spend that much money, do we spend it on doing what we thought we were doing? Do we spend it on something like this? How do we best spend those dollars? And so we've already begun that process. We should answer some of those questions. And when we get to the end of that, we can then talk about who needs to do what based on whatever that study shows us.
It'd be interesting to see how that study compares with what they presented in their information, for sure. Think about it. Next thing I'd like to ask the board to do is consider a, a request for an emergency declaration for Oregon inlet from the state and from the Fed with regard to emergency dredging ASAP. This, I think it was on Friday, Donnie Braddock, who's a Pelagic Longliner, was trying to, to go fishing. He just had his boat out of the, out of the shop, had completely redone the inside of it, painted outside, just got it really refitted and ready to roll. Iced up, fueled up, headed out the, the shortcut that's available now because the, the, the crack is, is filled back in from the work that Mary did a few weeks ago. So all of the guys, charter boats, any fishermen that are on commercial vessels for sure, are using one of two routes that are innocent shortcuts that are outside of the federally designated channel. So they're not covered by insurance when they're in that, in that zone. Donnie made it out of that fine. He was staying in the, in the designated channel. And as he went out across the bar, again, in the designated portion, a, a wave picked him up and slammed him down on the bottom, completely destroying his rudder, tore it completely off the rear end of the boat, all the way up to where it joins up in the, the center of the keel. He started taking on water, and the, the Coast Guard had to come out and thank goodness was able to pull him back into Wanchees and get his boat out of the water to, so he can get it repaired. But we've got a problem. And it ain't like this is the first time everybody's heard that we've got a problem. But I think we're at a point that we need to once again, request an emergency situation for Oregon inlet. And both from the Feds and from the state, stayed in support of us, I guess, to go to the Feds, and try to get some emergency dredging in here from Great Lakes or whoever, excuse me, whoever can get that done as quickly as possible. Jim, you may have some comments you want to make in that regard.
Yeah.
But I think you'll agree, we got an issue.
Yes, 100%. The, the work that's been done recently in the dredging categories at Oregon inlet has not been sufficient to keep it open for more than a week. And I, I spoke with the gal that spoke to us earlier about the Ferry Division, and they, NC DOT can declare an emergency, and they get the dredge like that. For some reason, when we declare an emergency, it doesn't work that way. So maybe we need to contact our congressman too.
I think that's part of, whether we do this as letters or resolution or whatever the fastest way, you know, need to land on them pretty hard.
You just said the NC DOT can declare an emergency, and we get immediate response. We have Catherine Peel from the Ferry Division. No.
But that's for their ferry channels.
If it's a ferry channel, then, then they can get immediate action with the emergency. If we declare an emergency because it's for our charter fisherman or our commercial fleet, we don't get the same response.
Thanks. Yeah, that clarification helps. Thank you.
Yeah.
And it's, it's bad. I mean,
It's horrible.
He, he didn't, he doesn't even draw, what, five feet? He doesn't even draw that much, what, four and a half feet?
And, you know, I'm surprised he could on the bar. The bar's actually in, well, it needs work, but it's, it's in relatively decent shape.
He draws, he draws like four and a half, maybe five feet on, on Babalu. And it slammed him down hard enough.
But I think, I think the point that you made, that when you don't operate in a marked channel, that you're not insured, is extremely valid. And the other thing that we need to try to do is get our local Coast Guard station on board. Their attitude lately has been that, well, we can get our boats out. Well,
How long?
That's great. But, you know, we're, we're having, the two, two boats ran aground right inside the double nickel, too. It was probably operator error. I don't know that for sure. But they went on the wrong side of a buoy, and they actually almost hit each other. But it, it's frustrating.
Do that. It's frustrating.
So what's the best course of action?
Well, the Coast Guard has issued a notice to mariners, from what I understand. This is, this is when I started making calls Friday. But I think they've issued a, a notice to mariners. Now, I, I haven't seen the notice. I don't know exactly what it says other than be careful crossing the bar, maybe. I don't know.
I think we need to put it out to everybody.
Yeah. It, it needs, it needs to go to our federal representatives, to our state, right straight to the governor's office.
Yeah.
And he can, he can maybe add some oomph to it when it gets to the Feds, because that's where the help's going to have to come from.
Can we get something out today and I can sign it?
Do it as a letter?
Whatever you think's the best, best and fastest.
I can get that done quicker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll get somebody working on it, have it, or have it ready for you to look at. You can authorize Sherilda.
Okay.
So you don't have to hang around.
Right.
And then we'll get it out. And then if you like, we can also make some calls. We'll email the letter and then make some calls following the letter, telling the staffers at the various congressional offices what's going on. I'll get with Josh and some of those folks.
We need to get the press to highlight it also.
When I talk to
Make it public.
Make it public. On Friday, he said that the merit at that time was still in, still at Hatteras. That was going to be finishing up and then going to Wilmington, I think, to Carolina Beach. And that while it was still in the neighborhood, we might be able to get it back up here to do a little, maybe a little patchwork or something. I don't know where that stands. I didn't see Barton before the meeting this morning, so I don't know.
Does all of this go away when Ms. Katie is online?
Should.
So all of this panic, emergency, everybody's running aground.
Ms. Katie will make a huge dent in this situation.
That was the point of doing it.
She will, she will never get it, she will never get it to the fourteen feet that, that authorized. Yeah, fourteen plus three.
Okay.
Unfortunately. Maybe ten, twelve.
And that still don't help the large dragger.
That's right. All right, will you get that?
Get it going, yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Lloyd.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Bateman?
Supposedly Murphy's going to be in town today at twelve o'clock with Doug Doughty, Congressman Murphy. That helps out.
Okay.
Maybe we can talk to him and get him to help us out some.
Super. Sound like him. What, do you know what that?
I think they're going to be at the Sugar Shack at twelve o'clock, is what I heard.
He's probably going to have lunch after this meeting.
They serve pretty good shrimp down there.
So Jim, so let me ask you something. So would it be an idea that the Katie comes on and then we get, somehow get the other dredges that are here to get us where we need to be? And then the Katie bounces back and forth from Hatteras to Oregon inlet and handles all this stuff on a regular basis and get his ten foot or eleven foot where we need to get? But it seems to me if we're constantly playing catch-up, I don't care how good Ms. Katie's going to be or is, she's going to be down here and then Hatteras is going to be filling up. And by the time she gets down there, which is whatever lag time there is, sets up and starts doing down there, you're filling in down here, you're still playing catch-up. We need to get to a point of,
It's going to be a game of catch-up. The whole idea, the whole concept when we first started this project, I don't know, what, seven years ago? Was we just finished having Great Lakes down here. We dredged a channel coming in for the, for the new bridge. And within a couple of months, the channel was completely filled in. And it was, I think, nine million dollar project, something like that, nine or eleven million or something like that. And then a few months, the thing was filled in. And so sitting and thinking and discussing, it was like, you know, sometimes that little engine that keeps going every day can maintain it to a point where it's usable. Rather than bringing that amount of money in for a one-time thing and then four months later, it's gone. So, you know, if, if we can get federal money, which when the federal government said they were not going to build the jetty, they said they were going to maintain the inlet and keep it dredged. They made that commitment. That commitment is gone by the wayside. They barely give us enough money to have a little bit of dredging and doing the surveys. So they've gone back on their word. If we can get the federal government to fund a major dredging project at the inlet and then have the Ms. Katie maintain it and be there all the time. You know, and then when it's being maintained like that, then you'll be able to take it out there and go down to Hatteras. But Hatteras, I'll tell you what, if, if the ferry channel isn't going to the point anymore and goes down to the horsepin or whatever, the pony pen, that's going to alleviate the dredging, the sloop channel, and it's going to be a whole nother can of worms down there. That's a, I mean, when they said that, I was like, holy cow. It's going to be an issue.
Jim, I think, I think one thing additionally that needs to be looked at, and this is because the crack filled in as fast as it did since we got the new bridge. And I don't know who does this kind of study and maybe, maybe Noah's got somebody that does it. Somebody's got somebody that does. Something needs to be studied and see why we're getting so much sand so fast loading up on, because we didn't have that before.
Well, one of the issues is how they're doing it now. The sidecaster is really designed to do pilot channels and make it deep enough for other dredges to come in. Sidecaster all it's doing is moving sand from here to over to here. And you've got tidal waters going in and out of the inlet twice a day. So, yeah, you can move the pile of sand from here to the back of the room. But in a week or two, all that sand's going to move back in from the tide. You know, and it's still one point two million cubic yards of sand or so coming across that inlet every year.
But, but again, pick a number, five years ago, crack wasn't filling in like that, like it's doing now. I mean, this has been just pretty quick.
It was an old bridge versus a new bridge and we all knew that there was going to be different dynamics with sedimentation there. So we might be,
Piles are a lot farther apart. You're not trapped in the same.
The question comes down to, is this the new normal? And, and, and again, why is it doing it? And again, that why ultimately results in the only thing that's ever going to stabilize that inlet. And you know, you know the five-letter word as well as I do. And until there's a jetty there, it ain't never going to stabilize.
Right.
Period. And this, the way the crack keeps filling in, I mean, it can do it in no time. It's crazy. And, and that throws you out of the federally designated channel, which again affects insurance and everything else. There's some legitimate things to be followed up on here.
Well, what you're calling the crack is the west part of the bridge.
Yes.
And the crack is from where that west part of the bridge connects over to the Oregon Inlet Fishing Center through what used to be, I mean, I've walked across that ankle deep before. But now it's maintained a fairly deep channel. And the, they actually marked it as a channel. It's not technically a federal channel because it's not designated, but they did put channel markers in there. But yeah, it's, that Body Island spit, if you look at how it wants to grow, it wants to grow in, coming on inside. So, I mean, it's going to be job security.
To your original question, Commissioner Bateman, when we worked through this project and when we first started it, Jim and I and others were intentional, we went to the Corps and talked about them, that this wasn't to be done to replace the core.
Yes.
Our expectation was, was they would continue to do what they would do and it would augment it and allow us to do some other things. If they're working, you can't have two and they're working at the same time, then we can go down to Hatteras and do something with the other one or vice versa. So that the money that's allocated to Dare County from the core could still be used and we could still get progress and try to get these channels open and operable as they should be. We've reiterated that a bunch of times to them. In fact, when the general was here from Atlanta and the Colonel and the whole crew was in here, we had that same discussion at that meeting and they were all, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And it was all positive. The reality is the president puts the dollars in the budget and if we're maintaining it at some level, are they going to continue to maintain it a level? And that's a coin flip. Who knows?
Well, Bobby, you know, you know as well as I do, I mean, this is preaching to the choir. But it almost is laughable at this point. They've got two dredges that's available to work from Maine to Texas. Two dredges. The other one's still in the shop and ain't due to come out until sometime next year, I think.
Next year, probably.
There's no way.
And we've had conversations with the Corps and with our congressional delegations, not just the current ones, but the previous ones as well, about changing the federal legislation to allow the Corps to get some more dredges. If, if the private sector isn't going to bid on these small dredge projects because they're too small, too shallow, they don't have ships small enough to get in there, then there ought to be some way that the Corps could build smaller dredges like that, shallow rapid dredges to do the things that need to be done up the coast.
And we, How many times have we asked them to get rid of the Jones Act? How many times? I bet you it's a half a dozen.
There's a huge lobby that's against you.
But we've even not said get rid of it. But amend it to where if you tried multiple projects where you haven't gotten a bid from the private sector, then you know there's no market for that and therefore there's a trigger that allows the Corps to build another dredge. And so there's ways to not throw away the Jones Act if that's got such a strong lobby, but to sort of make it a no harm, no foul to those who are lobbying against it because they aren't bidding on this. And I talked to Great Lakes and I've talked to several of the companies about that and they're not interested. When we were building the dredge, when we got the funds, I called them to see if they wanted to be the private partner to build the dredge with, you know, we were soliciting bids at the time or RFQs at the time. And they had no interest in doing it. And I talked to the new person at Great Lakes about a month ago and same sort of thing. He was asking me about the Ms. Katie and what it was going to do and it doesn't compete with them. So I don't understand why something can't be done because nobody's stepping on the turf of those that are lobbying against it if they would do it the right way. But we haven't been very successful in making that happen.
Yeah, well.
The last thing I,
Murphy's here today, so maybe,
Yeah. I know.
Make an impression.
I met with a couple, I met with the Assistant County Manager and the Director of Financial Development for Carteret County last week. And one of the questions, they were, they have a site that they want to develop for Marina down there. And that's mainly what they were talking to me about. But they were also very interested in how we went about both our workforce housing stuff that we're doing and also the dredge because they're, they're interested in, they've got some issues down there. So there's other counties and it'll be interesting to be at the byways meeting this week.
Lightning pencil down in the Hatteras, they're interested.
They're, they're very interested in, in how it happened and doing something like that for their places. So, you know, the private, public-private partnership might be an answer to a lot of this stuff. But the Corps isn't real thrilled with it. They think we're competition, but,
To do a public-private partnership for a jetty.
That's right.
Exactly.
Anything else, Commissioner Bateman?
So isn't there some kind of law about raising reptiles for selling and stuff like that?
Raising what?
Reptiles to sell.
Well, you got a reptile you want to raise?
I had, I had three ladies corner me yesterday at a restaurant, beat me up about some evidently neighbor.
Thin man down here on Roanoke College.
Yeah.
Well, they, they had a, there is a new law on that that was put into books after the guy let the cobra get out in Raleigh. So there was a new law. I don't know what the extended that law is. We have a lawyer sitting over here who keeps up with that.
I haven't read it. I don't know what it says. I can find out.
But what he, you know, he was already sued because he was raising rats to feed the snakes.
This guy over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and the guy that sued him won the lawsuit.
Well, the rats are back.
Well,
And they're running rampant.
Somebody may be in violation of the law.
We want rats or reptiles.
I got the address for it. Once we get done, I got the address for it.
We need to release more snakes.
Evidently the snakes they have aren't eating like they need to or something. I don't know.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tobin?
Okay, talking about dredges. We've had some, there was some bad news this week. The, the day tanks for the fuel,
Ms. Katie?
Yes, failed the pressure test. And when they took a picture of the weld, which I think you all know that I used to inspect stuff like that. But when they took a picture of the weld and sent it to us, I said, I would have flunked that weld visually. I didn't eat pressure test or no pressure test. It looked like a beginning welder had welded it. But there, since it flunked the pressure test, they're going to remove the tanks and weld up new tanks, put them back in. So it shouldn't affect delivery date on it. And it doesn't affect the funding, doesn't affect anything from EJ East side or Dare County side. It's just not, it's just not a great thing. But that's all I've got.
Well, thanks for sharing that with us. I hope it doesn't hold it up. We've already moved it back a couple of months. Thanks for the update, Jim.
Yep.
Commissioner Ross?
Quiet week, Mr. Chairman. I don't have much. I just, by way of interest, spoke my head in the Board of Elections and inquired how many voters had cast their ballots here in Manio since early voting opened. And the total was eighty-one.
There's an election going on?
I just, again, just wanted to point out eighty-one. I don't know what our costs, expenses of maintaining elections, early voting. But it just seems that a rational person would say, should we be doing this much early voting? Is there a cost-benefit analysis that says this is not efficient?
I could have told you that without you getting the number.
Which is my implied glance towards you, Mr. Chairman, because I suspect it as much. Okay?
I, my wife and I voted in KDH Friday, end of the day.
Yes, sir.
It was probably six o'clock-ish. I was number seventy-nine.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's a big precinct down there.
Very large expenditure for very modest results.
Yeah.
And I would just offer PSA here, a public service announcement, looking over to our communications team. I'm sure this will be part of our weekly news blast. The fastest two minutes in sports are coming up in six days on Saturday, May seventh. So tune into NBC to see it. The Kentucky Derby will be on on Saturday. That's all I have, sir.
I'm surprised you didn't say anything about golf. Seventy, seventy-five hundred yard Mexico deal with five par threes at that course. That, that blows my mind. Seventy-six hundred yard course, but on that course, there were five par threes at the Mexico Open.
For those that don't understand what he's saying, five par threes mean fewer yards, which means seventy-six hundred is extraordinarily long for the par fours and par fives. But,
Six hundred and ninety-seven yards, I think, was the par five.
They're all downhill?
At altitude, the ball does carry far Mexico. The, I believe it was played, was that at altitude or was that right on the coast?
It's on the coast.
Okay, then I withdraw my altitude comment. They played inland before at altitude, to which I have no explanation. They're superhuman and they do things nobody else can do.
These guys are putting the ball, these guys are putting the ball low in the green with their second shot, going a par five, five, six hundred and ninety-seven.
I'd take a driver, two, three woods and a four iron to get there.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the Green Space Initiative, I think they did an excellent presentation. One of the things is, in, in, in my business, I do artificial turfs. I do synthetic buddy greens. And I wanted to kind of get, get down on it a little bit, just so that we've got a full understanding of it. To do a synthetic turf for a football field or soccer field, there's grading in a base material, which is about three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, a weed block, which is about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Synthetic turf is about four hundred and ten thousand. Seams and borders are about a hundred and thirteen thousand. And the silica sand, which is eighty-nine thousand dollars, because you have to put one pound per square foot. And silica sand rises and falls in price because it's a traded commodity. So currently, the total cost for one, if we did one today, would be about one thousand sixty-eight, I mean, one million sixty-eight thousand dollars. Install time, they were correct, is about six to eight weeks. Annual turf maintenance is anywhere from five to seven thousand. Now, the turf maintenance does not count if you, if there's a tear or a rip in it. If that, if that's the case, then it's just, that's not part of that five to seven thousand dollar annual cost. With the amount of turf clay that we would have on it, my suppliers would do a recommendation of eight to ten years of a turf replacement along with adding to the base, base material maintenance. So if you add the five to seven thousand, and then if you look at the synthetic turf, it'd be four hundred, four hundred and ten thousand right now, if you, since you know you're going to have to replace in ten years, you could actually put that cost into your maintenance, which would make it, you know, about forty-six, forty-seven thousand dollars a year in our annual budget for replacement maintenance. And if we're looking at one field, that's just the cost of one field. If we do multiple fields, then of course that, that number multiplies by each, each. If we do multiple fields, then of course that, that number multiplies by each, each one.
So, so Commissioner House, what you've just said is, the estimate provided by the ladies this morning is it was roughly $4 a foot and your numbers translate to roughly $20 a foot. So, we have an unreconciled difference of $16 a foot to install turf.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, um, also the one, one major concern about doing an artificial turf is that the NFL Players Union, uh, sites of research indicates a 28% higher rate of non-contact lower extremity injuries on artificial turf compared to real grass, as well as a 32% increase in non-contact knee injuries and 69% increase to non-contact foot and ankle inju- injuries. Now, when I talk about the artificial turf and, and you're trying to relate to these numbers, remember that artificial turf is a hard surface. That base material is, as an aggregate, is about four to six inches thick, is compacted, and then the turf is laid over the top of it. So, it's very, it's a hard surface. And, um, Katrina Kurska with the National Center of Health, Health Research did an extensive study on artificial turfs. And, um, knee injuries, ACL tears, um, were at a greater percentage. She found, she came up with the same numbers as the NFL did. Um, ankle injuries, the same as the NFL did. Uh, concussions, nationwide study looked, looked at concussions on cop, collegiate and high school football players. The study looked at over 17,548 football players over the course of three years, 888 of whom reported having at least one concussion. There are two main causes for these concussions. One, a result of contact with another player, or two, as a result of contact with the ground. Uh, when looking at con- contact with the ground, the researchers found that head contact with turf was disproportionately associated with concussions. They also found that more serious concussions were associated with artificial turf than with grass. Heat-related illness and injuries. Uh, artificial turf is, can get extremely hot in there some days. I can attest to that. I burnt myself on it trying to replace it. Um, for example, on a 90-degree day, the surface temperature of a grass field is 98 degrees. If on artificial turf, it can be up as high as 166 degrees. This puts athletes at a higher risk of heat-related illness and injury as dehydration, heat stroke, and thermal burns. Abrasions, obviously, like I said, it's a hard surface and abrasions, injuries were accounted for, uh, an increase of 19.3%. Um, there were some other, uh, other, uh, affected injuries, such as, you know, dislocated fingers and stuff like that due to falls and stuff is up, that, that weighs out. Um, so, the bottom line, many of the studies have injury rates on artificial turf versus grass. In many cases, injury rates were greater on turf. Um, so, I just wanted to make sure we had, you know, a complete knowledge or understanding of what we're looking at. Um, because one, one of the things I did notice in their presentation, uh, was that the only thing they talked about as far as injuries, uh, were that there were no holes, uh, uh, or slant spaces in, in, you know, that the kids could trip on, which brings up, but the injuries that are associated with artificial turf have a lot more, uh, devastating results than just a, a grass field. I just want to make sure we got all that information out there as well. Um, and our day in history, the fall of Berlin hails in the beginning and the end of World War II in 1945, when the Soviet, uh, Soviet forces raised their own flag over Nazi High Command Center. And, uh, in months to come, the German capital will be divided into Allied zones with USSR controlling the east, east Berlin. And as we know, in 1961, the wall was built. 1989, the wall fell. In October in 1990, Germany was reunited. And that all started in 1945. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. That brings us to County Managers' business. What do you have for us today? Additionally.
Some of you all have seen in that there, there's a gentleman looking at building a museum in Kitty Hawk, where the visitor center is up there. Kitty Hawk has supported it. Um, they had asked us some time ago to do a resolution to, for, with them to help support that project. Um, we were reluctant to do it, didn't move it, never got on your agenda because we didn't know, uh, it was a Wright Brothers Museum and we were unsure how the Park Service felt about it, wanted to be sure everything, everybody was on the same page. The chairman and I met with the developer, um, and went through, I think Dave wasn't there with us, was he?
No.
Uh, I think since then, the chairman has talked with the Park Service, they don't have any objection to what we're doing here either. And so, I'm here this morning to ask that if, with your permission, we'll prepare a resolution, uh, for the chairman to sign that would say Dare County would support that. If the guy does what he says he's going to do, it's a pretty impressive museum at the entryway to Dare County, that it would include a new visitor center that they pay for that would take care of that other one, uh, make it much nicer and much easier to access. And so, it looked like a very good project. I don't know if any of you have seen it, but, um, in any event, if you all are prepared to support that with the town of Kitty Hawk, we will be glad to do the resolution for the chairman to sign.
I'm good. They did, they did a presentation to the terrace here. I've seen it before. Looks like it's going to be nice.
It is, very nice.
I think it all hinges on D O T.
Right.
Yeah.
So, would you make that in form of a motion?
I will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Just to, um, uh, I've had personal conversation with a park superintendent and gotten them, him in touch with them, and they've met with him and having that meeting together, he's, he has no issues with it. We, we will put something in the resolution that, um, the superintendent asked us to, um, put something in there with respects that they'd work with the Park Service, uh, on, um, issues that may come up with, uh, whatever that, the new group's going to offer, that they'll take them in consideration and work with them. So, um, appreciate that.
So, this is for the, for the new visitor center and that aviation museum?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, and it's also going to be an observatory as well.
Oh, wow.
Vice Chairman, any other comments from the board? Hearing none, those in favor then of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent. Motion carries it now.
Um, just one last thing, uh, and it's more to make you aware than take action. And I know you're going to have questions, but I don't have any answers because what information we have is what I'm about to tell you. Um, I got a law firm from a, a letter from a huge law firm in New York. They have, on their letterhead, they don't name their 100 lawyers, they name the 100 countries that they have their law firms in. Uh, and they're representing a unidentified, somebody that, that has, I don't know if they're Airbnbs or rental units in Dare County. And we're not the only county that got it. It's gone to almost all the counties in the state. And they're, they've been escrowing taxes, occupancy taxes, and they want to do a tax settlement. They'll say, we'll give you all the tax we escrowed if you'll release us from any previous taxes. Well, we don't know who the client is, we don't know how many previous taxes are, we don't know how much money it is. We don't know much of anything beyond what I just told you. Um, it's been on the list, sir, uh, among the county attorneys. From what I can tell, most of the counties are not doing this because they don't know what we're talking about, don't know what we're giving up, you know, don't know any of this.
And they're letting that stand in the way of agreeing.
Yeah, right.
Hard to believe.
And, um, I talked with Becky at tax collection to hear what she's hearing among the list, sir, and the people, the tax collectors throughout the state, and they're all sort of the same thing. And so, I tell you this because I don't know what will come of it, I don't know what else you'll hear about it, but I didn't want you to hear about it and say, well, he never told us about that, we don't know what you're talking about. So, I, here it is, it's out there. My intention is to go back to them, I don't know if they'll respond or not, and say, we can't do anything without more information. Call me and let's get some information, and if it's a good deal, we'll bring it to the board. If this is all you can give us, then we're not interested in moving forward. So, again, no action needed on you, just to be aware, that's floating around out there and it's not just our county, it's throughout the state. Uh, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. Uh, Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us today?
The two dates of upcoming events, we have next week on the 12th, that's a Thursday, the Virginia Tillot Community Center dedication, open house cookout at 4:00 that afternoon. And then on Tuesday, May 24th, again at 4:00, we have the ribbon cutting and open house for the new remodeled, um, Health and Human Services. So, I just want to make sure you both, that you all have those on your calendar, and we've been sending out invites and will continue to do that, so hopefully we'll get a lot of good public participation.
Good.
But we've worked with, um, Johnny and Michael Tillot to develop the program for next week, and it looks like it's going to be a nice, a really nice, um, dedication ceremony.
Great. Good deal.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Public, I mean, uh, Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, do you have anything else for us today?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, then that brings us to, uh, we need a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on May the 16th.
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner House, seconded by.
Second.
Commissioner Ross, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent. Motion carries it now.
Thank you.